Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to the January 22th Board of Selectmen's Meeting, Open Session, going right into Executive Session to discuss General Laws Chapter 21 A3, Resolution of All Turbine Litigation. Also, under Section A3, authorize executing memorandum of understanding with DPW Union. And under A6, the status update on potential purchase of Liberty Green Project. And as Chair, I declare that not to go into Executive Session would prejudice the town's position, and we will return to Open Session after this Executive Session.
Second?
All those in favor, by roll call?
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Moran, aye.
Jones, aye.
Welcome, everyone, to the January 22th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. The Board has just returned from Executive Session, and now we're calling to order the Open Session, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have a proclamation, No Guff Week. Does anybody?
I'm happy to.
Here you go. Oh, you've got to write in writing.
Whereas, No Guff Day has been celebrated since 2001 at Falmouth High School, when Greg Gilbert and Doug Rebusol, working with students to find a proactive way to handle conflicts, came up with a phrase, "No Guff." Since Mr. Rebusol's tragic death that same year, no guff has been celebrated in his remembrance. And whereas, by taking the pledge and making concerted effort to observe the no guff mantra, community members work together and support each other in keeping a positive attitude and creating a positive environment. The No Guff Pledge, I will not speak, text, or post anything negative about anyone for an entire day. And whereas, celebrating no guff can raise awareness, change the environment, and help people feel better about themselves and others by discouraging negative remarks, put-downs, and bullying. And whereas, the Town of Falmouth is a no guff community, celebrations and observations are planned throughout this week. Falmouth citizens are encouraged to come up with creative ways to celebrate the no guff concept, at home, at school, at work, and during leisure time. Now, therefore, we, Susan L. Moran, Megan English Braga, Doug Jones, Sam H. Patterson, and Douglas C. Brown, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us, do hereby call upon citizens of Falmouth to participate in all activities related to the no guff policy and proclaim, January 29th to February 2nd, 2018, as No Guff Week, and I so move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you just come up just for a second, let us know what's going on this week? Come on in. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having us, and thank you for issuing another proclamation. My name is Tracy Crago. I work at Falmouth High School. I'm the Director of the Volunteers in Public Schools Program. And as always, I bring the best part about No Guff Week, the students, Patrick Hodgson and Hale Thomas, both seniors, and they're going to share just quickly in a moment. But I wanted to share with you, the theme of this year's No Guff Week is, what's your superpower? With the idea that everyone has something that they do well, and the idea of sharing that, whether it's a smile or a kind word, so that's this year's theme. And as always, we're kicking off the week with the Morse Pond School Assembly. There will be the traditional video that gets shown every year, so we welcome you to come to that. That'll be showing at 8:30, 9:30, and then something around 10:30, the last one's to be determined. I'll let you know, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then throughout the week, each of the schools will be celebrating in different ways. And we're also working with the Chamber of Commerce. We started a community spirit award a few years ago, so that the awards aren't just in the schools, but also in the community. And we had some really amazing nominations this year. It's our fifth year. So the committee meets this week to choose, and we'll be awarding that later in No Guff Week. I also brought a few posters over the years. Some of the businesses, and even at Town Hall, have been posting these No Guff Zone posters, which is a good reminder that we really do strive to, especially during No Guff Week, to keep it friendly and nice. So I'm just going to ask the gentleman here to share with you a little bit about what no guff means to them.
Welcome.
Hi, there. Again, I'm Hale Thomas. I think No Guff Week can, to some people, be thought of as a week where everyone's really, really nice to each other. But I think more so than that, No Guff Week is a week where we sort of celebrate how nice we are to each other throughout the whole year, and I think that can be said about all of the public schools in Falmouth. And so Patrick Hodgson won last year the election for the No Guff candidate. He's a great representation of no guff in our community, and so here's Pat.
Hi, Pat.
Agree with everything that Hale said. It's great being in the Falmouth Public School System for 13 years, you know, being a first grader and now all the way to senior year. It's really a great experience. Every week, or every year, there's just a week dedicated to no guff as kind of a reminder to build peace, and it just really gives a great community feel in the public schools. It's just been a great experience.
Thank you. You know, I particularly appreciate celebrating Falmouth schools with all the accomplishments and with the great examples of the two of you. But I think, you know, as Tracy mentioned, it's really incredibly crucial now to remind us all in the community and to carry that forward. And so anyone that can attend any of the, you know, of the events, or put up a sign, or, you know, it would really be great to, you know, kind of have a contest in Falmouth. As you say, the Chamber of Commerce is involved, really, you know, let's do it up this year. So thanks very much. Thanks for coming. Anyone else on the Board?
Just briefly, you know, I think that, you know, we, obviously in schools, the focus is on academics, but for young people, for all of us, but especially in sort of those formative years, the social component is such an important part of your development. And so to really focus on what can be a place of anxiety or stress for a lot of students around sort of, you know, interactions with their peers, social media and things like that, I mean, I just commend the schools for really making this such a high priority, because I think just as much as academics in many ways, growing up to be compassionate and caring and feeling supported in your community is what allows our students to take advantage of the great academics that we have here. So thank you so much for that effort. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, guys. Thanks so much. Yes, please. Please.
Should they take this with them?
They'll probably need copies. Okay. Thanks so much. Thanks, guys. Recognition, Miss Braga.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the work of Scobah Rhodes. He was awarded a commendation and award this past MLK Day for all of his work on social justice. But I just want to recognize, from this Board and from this community, really, the thanks that we have for the many decades that Mr. Rhodes has worked, both in terms of education and in the broader community, really trying to bring awareness around issues of social justice. He continues to do so as Chair of the Affirmative Action Committee here in town, and he's an individual who is immensely approachable and always willing to have a conversation. And we are so pleased that he was recognized for his efforts by No Place for Hate Falmouth, and we send a lot of thanks and congratulations on that award to Mr. Rhodes.
Well deserved.
Great.
Announcements are next. For training session from Town Council, there'll be a session on open meeting law, public records law for all Town employees, elected and appointed officials, and members of boards and committees. That will be held in this room on Tuesday, February 13, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. Second announcement, Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This past Friday and Saturday, we were pleased to attend the annual meeting of the Massachusetts Municipal Association in Boston, which we have done in years past as well. And as part of that two-day event, the Town of Falmouth was recognized with an award for risk management best practices. There were just a handful of communities that were, received similar awards. This in particular was in recognition of some excellent work in revitalizing the town's safety practices and revitalizing the committee involved in reviewing that to help facilitate a safe workplace environment. And my thanks goes to Personnel Director Denise Coleman, my colleague Peter Johnson Staub, working with department heads and others in putting together this best practices approach, which in the end will result in fewer workplace accidents and also dollars saved in terms of taxpayers' investment in our most important asset, our Town Employees. So we're very pleased to accept this on behalf of the Town, and I thank the members of the Board of Selectmen for your support as well, which allowed this to move forward in the positive way that it has. Thank you.
Great job, everyone involved. Next, Sam?
A couple more. The next few Saturdays, we have the joint meeting this Saturday.
Right.
And then the following Saturday is going to be that community survey, if you will, where people get, have the opportunity to come and basically express their thoughts about needs in the community, issues in the community that they think that Town Government should be addressing. But just kind of prompt everybody, we've got the Joint Committee, Board, and Commission meeting this Saturday at the Herman Room, and then the following Saturday, it will be this community forum at the High School Auditorium.
8:30 in the morning, we'll have food. Always a good take. All right, public comment time. Anyone here caught up who'd like to speak two minutes about an item not on the agenda, excluding any personal remarks? Hi.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm here to speak about a matter that came up in your January 8th meeting, and that's the matter of the stretch energy code. At that meeting, the Chair of the Energy Committee and one member of the committee spoke. I'm not a member of that committee, but I like that idea, so I thought I would come and speak in favor of that. I'll give you in a moment a page which has some information that I'll just summarize quickly for you now. The first part of it is from an article written in a publication called Fine Home Building. So yes, he says, the author, there'll be an adjustment for the builder, but there'll be a learning curve. And secondly, he says, there are going to be short-term costs, cost more to build to that code, but there's long-term savings. Thirdly, he says, people living in those houses are healthier and more comfortable. Fourth, he says, a tipping point is coming. More and more houses across the country are being built to those standards all the time. And so if you build to them, costs you a little bit more in the beginning, but in the long run, you save. So, now from my own perspective, why should Falmouth adopt this stretch energy code? Well, first of all, as the Chair of the Energy Committee said, it will help Falmouth get the Massachusetts Green Community status. And secondly, that'll make Falmouth eligible for quite a bit of grant money. Thirdly, from what I understand, I'm not a builder, I don't know this myself, but from what I've been told and what I heard in the last meeting, the stretch energy code is actually not now all that different than the basic building code. Fourth, here in Massachusetts, 215 of the 351 cities and towns have already adopted the code. And I have listed on the back 10 cities and towns that are nearby, and the grants that they have received under the Green Community Grant Program.
Very nice. Thanks, Grant. Appreciate that. Go forward to the Energy Committee.
That's our trap that we put there for folks, if they try to come up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Thank you.
Seeing none. Next, we'll, under summary of actions, we have approved application for change of ownership of lodging house license for CMI Hospitality LLC, otherwise known as Captain's Manor Inn at 27 West Main Street, Falmouth. Is the applicant here? Hi, welcome. Come on up if you would. Welcome, and if you would just introduce ourselves and let us know why you'd like to have this license?
I'm Randy, Patty Lawton. We just moved to your community. We found a great property that we purchased from the Robinsons. They put in a tremendous amount of work in the property, and we were very fortunate to purchase the property.
Well, I'm sure you'd be happy with the community and the business. Ma'am?
Well, and that was one of the things we had been coming here for about nine months and stayed in various ins and everything, and fell in love with Falmouth. And especially, I was born and raised in a small community, in a different state. But the community and the townspeople that I met when I was traveling here over the summer months and the fall were all so welcoming, and it reminded me of when I was growing up. So we found the property, fell in love with it, and we would like to carry on with the tradition. And the things that the Robinsons implemented with the inn, it's a beautiful property, and we hope to continue on with that, and we're really excited about it.
That's great. Any questions from the Board? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have to approve application for two one-day liquor licenses for the Falmouth Theater Guild, Highfield Theater at 58 Highfield Drive, February 9, which is a Friday, and February 10, which is a Saturday. Is anyone here on this? Is there a motion?
My approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next, we have approved application for one-day liquor license for the West Falmouth Library, 575 West Falmouth Highway, for Saturday, February 3rd. Is anyone here from the library? I believe this is one of the production kind of game nights, sort of like a mystery, mystery show.
Murder mystery.
Right, murder mystery. So if anyone would like to attend, check out the West Falmouth Library website. Is there a?
Okay, it actually, they say it's Make a Deaf Wish Murder Mystery Event, is the way it's billed.
Even better.
So it sounds like it could be fun. I move that we approve this.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's only $25. That's pretty affordable, one time.
And it supports West Falmouth Library.
As we should. Next, under administrative orders, we have to approve the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution Conservation Restriction. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, you have some materials in your board packet regarding conservation restriction on the Hooey Quisset Campus. It's consistent with actions taken by the Town Conservation Commission and the State Reviewing Agency as well. And this would require the action of the Board to agree to accept this conservation restriction. It would be the latest on this campus that the Town would have agreed to, but certainly not the first.
Mr. Robinson, did you want to add anything? Welcome.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. I represent the Oceanographic Institution. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I have a plan that shows the location of the conservation restriction areas, but you also have that plan. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So if there's a way we could show that plan, just so the public can know what it is we're talking about?
I actually loaded these plans onto the computer. It could go on the screen if you want. So this is a portion of the Woods Hole Oceanographic Campus, which is actually about 186 acres between Oyster Pond Road and Woods Hole Road. This depicts 15 acres that actually abuts Woods Hole Road at the main entrance to the campus. That's already in a conservation restriction. In this location down here is the newest building on the Quisset Campus. It's the Laboratory for Ocean Sensors and Observatory Systems.
LOESOS.
LOESOS. And in connection with that, some of this land was restricted. In the last couple of years, there have been two paving additions, one to the LOESOS building and one to a lab off of Oyster Pond Road on the Quisset Campus. In connection with those, the Cape Cod Commission required a small conservation restriction area, 34,000 square feet, taken right here. And the, that's an error, exactly 0.34 acres, about a third of an acre. And in connection with the expansion of the other paving project, the Conservation Commission required a set aside of 8,606 square feet, and that's this little area. They are both located, this one to be proximate to a vernal pool on the other side of that conservation restriction area, this one abutting existing conservation restriction area that also protects a vernal pool depicted on the plan. So as the Oceanographic Institution develops the property, and it will be doing so perhaps for many decades to come, there have been reasons why conservation restrictions have been required by permitting agencies. So we continue to add to the restricted area, and fortunately, there is area that's available in order to meet the permitting requirements. Again, I have plans that show this in the context of the entire 100-plus acres, if this is sufficient.
Doug?
The one thing I couldn't read in the plan is, under whose jurisdiction is the large rectangular piece to the, I guess, to the northeast, to the northeast of the?
Long Woods Hole Road.
The one that's in Wai.
That one right there, yeah. We just can't read that in our plan.
Well, that area, which is non-subject to the conservation restriction area, is part of 123 acres that are, the Quisset Campus, basically on this side of this campus, there's more acreage extended over to Oyster Pond Road. But this undeveloped property, which has significant frontage on Woods Hole Road, is retained by the Oceanographic.
It is, okay. Because the other parcels are privately owned, I just wasn't sure.
These are privately owned parcels, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval of the conservation order. I'm sure the language correct?
Second?
So we are approving this restriction, conservation restriction.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. Next, under administrative orders, we have to authorize the Town Manager to accept NRCS federal funding for Kuna Mesut and McGansett projects. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. The Board's familiar certainly with the Kuna Mesut projects that have been discussed at some length in different forums here before the Board. We also have Betsy Gladfelter joining with us once again, who has made presentations in the past. What has occurred is that we've been contacted by a federal funding agency passed through the state that some funding is available for the latest phase of that project, as well as the potential for a small piece of a stormwater project at McGansett. Both of those are listed as possibilities on your agenda. They would be requiring a 25% match, which would be the subject of a potential warrant article for the April Town Meeting. Again, these are projects that are anticipated to be going forward. In any case, and the availability of federal funding passed through the state to facilitate this would be to the Town's great advantage. And I know Betsy is here, if there would be any questions for her about the portion of the Kuna Mesut project that would be involved with this.
I just had a question.
Second?
I just want to ask, so I know this isn't really a grant necessarily, or is it? Are we still, I just want to make sure the process is still, do we get any way-in from FinCom, or does it go here? And then FinCom?
Correct. FinCom has recommended that this be accepted.
Okay.
They have, their subcommittee has reviewed it as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, good question, my oversight, thank you.
No, no, thank you. I move approval to authorize Town Manager to accept the funds.
One second.
I'm sorry.
Are we allocating funds to be able to match?
We have to do it at Town Meeting.
We have, yes, but, okay, but basically to move forward to essentially qualify for this.
Correct. It would be subject to Town, availability of funds through Town Meeting.
So authorize them to accept it, and then it's all contingent upon the Town Meeting vote.
Exactly.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have vote to approve payment to Cape Cod Municipal Healthcare from the Veterans' Department Donation Account. And I, who's here for veterans today? We have, we have a crew?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ahmed Mustafa, and I have the members of the committee here, and also the Director of Veteran Services is here. And what we're looking for is on that, from the money, the donation account, to help out Falmouth veterans that are indigent and need dental work. That's what it's for. There was one case, not, well, I'm going to say about two years ago, and this poor guy was going round and round and round. We finally got him a set of teeth, now he's smiling all over the place, and he feels better, and it works out. So it's a matter of health, and that's why we want to do that.
Great, Doug?
Is there an agreement that, like, Falmouth veterans will receive care at no cost? Is there something in writing, or are you just going to donate this?
This is going to be taken care of between Don Lincoln and Colonel Gardner, Karen Gardner, up at the healthcare center. And it's strictly for Falmouth veterans that need the care and haven't got the money. That's it.
So it's like a reserve fund?
Just the veteran.
Strictly for the veteran?
No.
So will it be a reserve fund to pay for those services, or?
It'll be, if they need some money to take care of it. It'll be if they need some money to take care of it, because there are some dentures that they can take care of with normal stuff that they have. The dentists are doing a pro bono work up there, so certain things they'll take care of, no problem. But in cases where they need a complete set of teeth or something, that's quite an expense and a lot of time and a lot of effort goes into it, so that's what that money is for. And we're hoping that at least that $10,000 will keep them going for quite a while. Hopefully, we don't have that many indigent or homeless veterans that need that kind of help.
Okay, thank you.
Sam?
So just want to remind us all that actually, community health services started office at Falmouth Free Clinic.
That's right.
And it was started by members of this community, and many of whom were actually veterans.
Right.
Retired officers from the Navy and the Army.
Right.
And now we see it, even though it's located in Mashpee and grown into this very large facility.
Very big.
It's still providing extended services, including dental work, which is fairly new to residents of Falmouth and as well as the rest of Cape Cod. And they are pretty lenient about providing services whenever they can, regardless of whether the person can pay or not for those services.
And they're opening up a office at Homeport.
Yes.
So there's going to be a small office there. And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but they're looking at getting a dental van that will go around to different areas. Because there are some homeless veterans, or not homeless, but indigent veterans that are in town housing, and they have no way to get to the clinic, so they'll be able to take care of them.
Great service.
I would move that we approve the payment to the Cape Cod Municipal Healthcare, $10,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, quickly, we have under special events, the Gosnell Polar Plunge, Falmouth Heights Beach, on Saturday, February 10, which I think was moved from the original date. Is there a proponent here?
Yes.
Hi, welcome.
Lisa Tisher, I'm the Community Coordinator, Gosnell and Prevention, and we are proposing a polar plunge called Freezing for a Reason, Dive Into Recovery. And this will go to raise some funds for our prevention department and also for our alumni. And our alumni are all encouraged, and there are many here in town, too. And so it's a great event. I'm going to leave you some posters.
Great.
I am actually going to take the plunge. I don't know how I'm going to do it. But we're all encouraging anybody who is interested to come out and help us with our raising funds for prevention, which we do a lot of in the town of Falmouth.
It's a great event.
It is.
Is there a motion? I move approval?
Thank you.
All over the page?
We had to move it from Old Silver to the Heights.
Yes, if people have to walk across ice, they'll have too much time to think about it and return that.
And I did go down to Old Silver just to check it out, because I heard, okay, it's frozen solid. And I was like, so the Heights is a much better location.
It's a good reason.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I thought that was so quick. Thank you. It was perfect timing. Next, we have a shade tree hearing for 744 Main Street and for 184 Sitters Pond Road. Notices hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Falmouth Board of Selectmen in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall on Monday, January 27, 2018, at 7:00 PM on the application of the Deputy Director of Public Works for the removal of one 22-inch and one 28-inch elm tree in front of number 744 Main Street. Removal is requested due to the excessive dieback tree limb, dead limbs, and proximity of tree limbs to overhead wires and Main Street traffic. Secondary to the poor condition of the trees, visual sightlines while pulling out of the police station driveway are compromised and can lead to vehicle hazards for emergency vehicles exiting from the police station. Publication date was January 5, 2018. Mr. McConity, welcome.
I just messed that up because it was turn on, turn off. I know this thing is very...
Takes a while.
He's flashing just right here. Is the way of it flashing? Yep.
Oh, good evening. Anyways, Peter McConity, I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm joined here tonight with our Acting Park Superintendent, Richard Pleasure, to discuss the two trees at 744 Main Street, basically the municipal complex. The two trees are directly in front of the Eddie Marks or the poor building. Both trees are elm trees. The trees do have dieback, and there's a lot of rot on the top of the trees. I do have some photos on that.
Doug, you want to try hitting the lights just in case something's coming up?
No, it's not.
It isn't? Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Correct. So, so these trees are directly in front of the Eddie Marks building. They're right outside the driveway to the police entrance of the police station. Not only do they have, you know, rotted limbs on top and fallen branches onto the sidewalks down below, they're also a sight distance hazard for police vehicles pulling out of the parking lot. The trees have basically insect bug damage and rot, completely excessive dead limbs on the top. The photos would show the photo...
It's coming up now.
It's coming up, okay.
While it's coming up, Mr. McConity, could I just ask, these are also the trees that we talked about at town meeting that would likely need to come out for the expanded project with the designated lane for police vehicles. Is that correct?
They are the two trees that were spoken at town meeting to come out because of their just, they're basically at the end of their life and the rot on them. They will not be part of the expansion of the driveway. They're just part of the sight distance when you pull out of that driveway to be able to look...
Look both ways.
East down the, down Main Street. So this is an aerial map of the complex, and the Eddie Marks building is right down in here. The two trees are right here. This is the police station driveway coming in to the, in and out of the police station, just to give you where we are. This, here's the driveway coming in from the police station. This is the tree on the west. This is the tree on the east, and you can see that the dieback, there's no leaves, there's no branch. The leaves do not come out on the tops of these trees. They have them for a couple of years now. This is if you were standing across the street over by John's store, you'd see the same, both trees, and you'd see the dieback and the proximity of it to the, to the wires. Same thing, this is standing over by Scranton Ave and looking the same at both trees. As you can see, the bark has basically fell off the trees, has fallen back. The branches have all fallen back. They're breaking and they're falling onto the sidewalk down below. So our removal reasons for this is the excessive dead limbs, the branches at the treetops, insect damage, the falling tree debris onto the sidewalk and roadway below. There's a, the concrete sidewalks are right down below that. There's a cemetery on the opposite side of the driveway, so that's a busy area of Main Street. Proxim?
I'm sorry, on the busyness subject, when are you planning to actually do the cut down? If the board approves it, when would you plan to do the work?
They would come down as soon as we can, could get it scheduled through the, through the Parks Department, the next week, two weeks.
Okay.
So the plan is, it's not associated with the work that we're doing on the driveway, but the plan is to start on the police station on the driveway in mid-March, getting into April. So that driveway would be open, full access for the police.
Okay.
Proximity to the overhead wires, the Parks Department, the opinion letter from the Parks Department describes the rot, the dieback, and the insect damage. Typically, what we do with Public Works, I've been through several of these in the past years, trees are very important to the community, especially on Main Street and the location that they are. So our typical practice at Public Works is if we remove trees, we put trees back to the largest caliber that we can put in there, which has, we did the parking lot on the fire station at King Street a couple of years back, and we were able to put four to six-inch diameter trees on the parking lot, and they took very well. They were anchored back, they were watered, they took very well. So with a situation like this, this could either be the trees come down and replace the trees, or the trees came down and we put it into the bigger planting plan when we do the work in the future. There's going to be some, the utility pole's going to be moved out there. We're going to be doing some more work in the parking lot, so there's going to be some times in the future that we'll have opportunities to put more trees, and there'll be more planting on the site.
Makes sense. Any questions? Is there a motion with regard to this one?
Do you need to close the hearing?
Ah, thank you.
Is there public comment?
Second.
We're going to, thank you. Is there any public comment with respect to the trees that were just discussed? Paul?
Greg, this is Doc's here. Paul Sellers, Old Dock Road. I'm also an arborist by trade. I'm familiar with the two trees. Both of them are in severe decline. Neither one of them are going to overcome the situation that they're in at this point. Most of the damage occurred at the root zone area there when sidewalk construction had been done a number of years ago, which started the whole process of the upper canopy starting to fail. So it would be in the best interest of the town to remove both trees. And Peter has mentioned before, certainly in town meeting, the probability of replacing those. So an appropriate step to remove a tree in an inappropriate place.
Glad you were here. Sam?
Since we have you there, Paul, and get your input as well, what would you recommend as a species of tree to actually replace it that could thrive there in that location?
Well, of course, it's a perfect opportunity. Along this whole stretch, and Peter also mentioned the cemetery that's just down the way, there's expansive lawn area that could accommodate right tree in the right place. Those plants that aren't going to grow up into the utility lines or into the roadway or inhibit the sidewalk, so some setback plantings. I mean, you're, there's a number of cherry varieties, crab apples. I mean, there's a whole host of plants, stuartias. You can go crazy with the selection there that trees are going to add value to that Main Street experience, and again, not decline over time as they conflict with some of the utilities or...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of the removal? Is there anyone here who disagrees with removal of this tree? Two trees.
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Okay, I would remove the, I would make a motion to approve the removal of the trees and recommend that the replacement happen within the scope of the renovation of the parking lot, not do it immediately right now, but wait to see what the whole plan is for that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, great, thank you. Next. Thank you. That's great.
You want to use a projector?
Thank you. Next, we have a tree, shade tree removal hearing. Notices hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Falmouth Board of Selectmen in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Monday, January 22, at 7:00 PM on the application of Donna and Ron Driscoll for the removal of one 20-inch and one 19-inch green ash tree in front of 184 Sitters Pond Road. Removal is requested due to the roots break up an asphalt driveway and exposed roots throughout the front yard, making lawn cutting and front yard maintenance difficult. Is the proponent for the removal here? Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's Ron Driscoll. Essentially, I don't have quite a show like he just had for the trees on Main Street, but essentially, that's it. There's, we bought the house in March, and we, there's two, two trees, I guess the ash trees. I didn't even know they were ash trees. And, but the root system, it looks like a nest of anacondas going across the yard. It's really unsafe to walk, and they're town trees. They were replaced, they were used as replacement trees after Hurricane Bob destruction in 1991. And this is from stories from the neighbors. So it has ruined the walk, it's ruined the driveway. And one thing that's not on there, there's a crack going right across the street. So that's, that's totally involved the whole street. These trees are, I think, probably the wrong species to put there at the time.
Thank you. Mr. McConity, do you have a view on these trees?
I do. I wasn't sure, because we weren't, Public Works is not bringing it forward, but I do have a...
Peter, you need to talk into the microphone.
I do have a small...
Okay.
For my trees?
Good try.
Excellent. I know that you were out there two or three separate times, once, once they were our trees, once they were the town trees, once the true trees show up, ready to shut, cut them down, and then you came up with a new idea that I can't understand. So once again, three hearings for the two trees on Sitters Pond Road. This is an aerial map showing, that's the location of the house right there, 184 Sitters Pond Road. This is Woods Hole Road. It's a loop road. You come in Sitters Pond Road, and it's a loop, goes all the way up, comes down, and goes all the way back out again. This is, that's the area, and these are the two trees right there in front of 184. So these are the, these are the two trees that were, that are being selected. They're both green ash trees. As it was says, one's an 18-inch and one's a 19-inch. There's a little bit of shade. I took these in the early afternoon. So this is looking at both, both trees from the west on this side, looking at both trees from the east on this side. You can see some of the roots coming up in the front area of the lawnway. They stick up four to six inches in the lawn. Here's some other areas of the lawn area with the roots coming up through the front lawn. This one's a little harder to see, but there is a root systems coming up. And this is their driveway right here. That's about five feet between the base of the, the edge of the trunk of the tree and the edge of the driveway.
Peter, is that a crack in the driveway starting?
Yeah, there's a, there's a crack, the root, there's a crack coming across the driveway right there with the roots.
Make sure we don't go too fast in the driveway.
So, so basically, our determination's with Public Works, whereas the tree removal is being requested by the homeowner. It's not being requested by Public Works. The removal of both trees is requested because the root systems are breaking up the driveway asphalt, and the shallow roots are making yard maintenance difficult. In the Parks Department opinion letter, it states that both trees are in good health and show no signs of failure. So if this is the winter time, you don't see the leaves coming out on the trees, but it does not show any signs of failure. We just want to be caution if we, if, on the vote on this, on these trees, because we do have other areas in town that have the same circumstances. I know Davisville Road has some circumstances. I'm out in East Falmouth. So if the decision is positive for the removal of the trees, once again, it's standard practice for the Parks Department that we replace the trees with two street, two good quality street trees that have an adequate diameter.
So can I just ask a question? So the trees were planted by the town after Hurricane Bob?
That's what I understand. I mean, I wasn't here in 1991 to see the planting, but that's the neighbor's been there forever, and he said that's what happened. And they're the only two trees.
Pardon me, sir, could you come to the microphone?
I'm sorry. Yes, according to the neighbor.
Okay.
And it's the only two, two trees of that size in the neighborhood that are like that, right next to the street, that age.
And so that's town property right there?
It's, is it easement?
It is? Okay.
Those two trees?
Sorry, I know, I'm sorry. I just want to clear, because it just, it's a little...
Yeah. Both of those two trees are picked up on the, are right on the town...
Roadway.
The roadway. It's 40 feet wide.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
So is it, Peter, is it your understanding that those trees were put down there by the town?
Um, I don't know that I can say that for sure, but typically, we would not plant green ash trees. That's not, would be a tree that we typically plant, but they look to be an 18-inch and a 19-inch tree. Look, that's pretty good diameter for a 20-year-old tree.
Thirty-seven.
Oh, 30-year-old tree.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
It could be.
And if I, just one other question. I know you're mentioning that there's other issues sort of on other parts of town, so we'd want to be cautious. And you're indicating that there are other town trees that we've planted at different times that are causing some of these situations in terms of people's private property in their lawns. And I mean, obviously, public roadways, you guys deal with that on a regular basis, but in terms of growing into people's property?
Yeah, growing on the people's property, growing into driveways. What's very indicative of these trees is the root system. They're healthy trees, but the root systems on these trees are shallow. That's just, that's just by nature that what, a symptom of what the trees are, one of the... the...
So we probably did remove them, if the Parks Department removed them. What would be the scope of work and cost?
So if the Parks Department did remove these trees, would schedule it through the Parks Department? They'd go out there, both these trees, probably two days worth of work to have them taken down. They'd take the trees down to the ground level, and then they'd have to come back at a later time. They can grind the stumps down below the surface of the, of the grass, but that would be the, basically the extent of what we would do.
Would not solve any of the root problem in the yard?
Um...
Would not solve the root problem in the driveway?
No, it would not. No, is it? There was one option that we, that was talked about is to put loam over the root system that was in the, in the front yard to cover up the roots, but it still would have the cracks in the driveway.
Doug?
Do you ever use an excavation machine to rip out the root?
That filling in the six inches also changed the whole water flow in the, in the whole yard. Take the flow away from the house, right into the house. Right now, the basement's dry.
Sam?
This is a question for Peter. I'm just surprised that this was planted by the town after Hurricane Bob, because I mean, I had trees, I had about five trees I lost in my yard, and the town never offered to replace the ones that were in the roadway. This is a little fishy to me. I...
Yeah. I, I think after Hurricane Bob, we were so busy at Public Works, running around trying to fix everything that was caught up in the storm. If this was, it would have been at a time after. But I, like I say, it's not the normal for us to plant green ash trees, so we usually don't, wouldn't plant that type of tree, would plant another type of street tree.
Are they a fast grower? I don't know anything about a green ash tree.
Right.
Mr. Sellers, do you know anything about green ash trees? Do they grow quickly?
Did you plant these trees? You can take the fifth.
Paul Sellers, arborist. So the green ash trees, one thing I will say about it is that Massachusetts in many areas is in a quarantine situation because of Emerald Ash Bore making its way across the country. It isn't here on Cape Cod or in southeastern Massachusetts, but it is heavily inundated in western Mass. It's kind of inevitable, it's going to be coming this direction. Proactive thing for the town to do would be to let the property owner remove the trees and replace them with a more acceptable species. But the green ash does, it's a moderate grower, it does grow fairly well when it's in the right situation, as these trees have demonstrated, so. But classic shade tree, not use as much now because of the insect damage from Emerald Ash Bore.
Mr. McConity, as I understand it, since these are in the roadway, if the owner of the property wanted to take them down, he would ask us permission to do so anyway, even if he wanted to do it at his cost. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So that would be the, the decision tonight, the vote tonight, what it would be, if it was approved, then it would...
Could it be approved that they can come down at his cost or approved that it comes down at town's cost?
Could be approved if it comes down at his cost, it's better for us. It's better for us.
Megan, just to that point, I guess, you know, not that we want to cost Mr. Driscoll any money, but I am really concerned that we don't know how these trees got there, because I do think it makes a difference, particularly if we're talking about going forward, other instances in town, if they're, if they're trees that the town planted, it's just a different story than if the homeowner, obviously not Mr. Driscoll, but previous homeowners, planted them. And so I, I know it's a long time ago, maybe there isn't an answer, but I would hope that we would, you know, have a little bit more of a sense of how the trees got there before we either have taxpayers put out the money for it or the homeowner, because it's just this limited instance here. But as you're noting, it, you know, could go down the line, and if we don't have a procedure that's in place, that's fair and that it's the same each time, you know, I think it's important for the public to know that we're going to, each time, figure out who planted it and who's responsible for removing it if it's going to be removed.
I'm not sure Mr. Driscoll's asking us though, but maybe he's asking just for permission to...
Right, so let's get organized here. So would, is it within your intent tonight to ask permission, if the board would grant it, for you to remove the trees at your own expense?
If I absolutely had to, yes. But I thought it was the town trees, and when we were talking to the, the other town representatives, they were all set to take the tree down.
Okay, just get information from the board.
I would love to see, I would love to see you take the trees down and root, take care of the root system, and we'll take care of the rest of the damage.
Well, are you now including any potential flooding to the basement because you were just mentioning that as a risk?
No, the risk was, was added, it was going to add six inches of loom to the front yard. It would have changed the whole flow pattern. Taking the trees out, I'm fine with that.
So now you're, but it sounds like you're extending it to removal of all the roots was, which was not contemplated by Mr. McConity, to my understanding of what he just stated.
He said he was going to, you know, grind the stumps down and grind the roots down.
He said the stump, and then he was going to put, raise the lawn with loam over. Okay, Peter, would you clarify? The process?
Yeah. The limits of what Public Works, if it was Public Works that would come in to do this, we have the equipment, would be able to come over and remove the trees and grind the stumps down.
He was mentioning the loam as an alternative if you left the trees up.
If the trees did.
To just fill over, and that was, Mr. Driscoll was indicating that would be...
But we're talking about roots. What, what are you going to do with the roots?
Nothing.
That's my point. If the loam goes over the roots.
Roots are on private property there. I just wanted to be clear too that typically, when Public Works, so when the town comes in and, and plants trees, it's usually a town project. So if we went in, if we did Old Boswell Road, Acapescot Road, a long project, we, we put into our cost proposal a budget number for, for trees. We would not go in and just plant, typically, we would not go in and just plant two trees in, in front of a, in a residential neighborhood in front of a, in front of a property, so.
Okay, so there's a, I don't know, ten roots that go ten feet from that tree. Are you going to be digging those up? Are you going to be putting loam on top of them and waiting for them to rot?
Public Works, what Public Works would be doing, or the limit of Public Works, would be, would take the trees down and would grind the tree, the stumps down below the surface of the lawn.
And leave the roots?
Correct.
Which would have to be covered with loam?
Could be covered with loam.
Which might raise, which might raise the lawn and run into the water problem that the homeowner was mentioning.
They're on private property, so then it would be up to Mr. Driscoll if he wants to have them ripped up.
That's the issue. Doug, did you have?
Just was going to say that if it was my trees, I would have an excavation machine rip out the roots and take all the problem stuff out. So maybe if the DPW would just cut the tree and leave a four or five-foot base, and you hire somebody with an excavator, you might be better off.
Could pull the loom?
If you leave them something to work with, they can use the machine to rip it out.
Sam?
Yeah, I'm bothered by the fact that we're kind of setting a new policy here. I think up to this point, the only time that, that the town has actually gone in and removed trees from roadway was when there was a safety issue.
Correct.
This is not a safety issue. And I'm, I'm very...
You can't walk across that yard.
Sir, you're not recognized. Mr. Patterson is speaking.
You know, I'm very reluctant to actually set a precedent here, when I think you'll find plenty of these kinds of root, surface roots, if you will, that, you know, are a nuisance to people, but many people actually enjoy the sort of the natural environment that you see with trees and their associated roots. I have them in my yard, I know that. So I, but anyway, to me, it's, it's an issue of setting a precedent and essentially establishing a new policy where we're actually going to get rid of trees that aren't a safety hazard.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor of removal of these trees? Is there anyone here who wants to speak against removal of these trees?
I would move we close the hearing?
Second.
Something in the middle.
We haven't voted. Come on up, Mark.
Mark Finer in Precinct Six. It just seems from what I've heard that it is possible that the town did plant these trees, and it was sort of an error. If the town were to take the tree down and grind the stump, that would take care of the close end of the root. Then the homeowner could dig at the other end, cut those out, and have whoever fixed his lawn take care of that. And like I said, you'd kind of meet in the middle.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sam?
My move that we allow the homeowner to remove the trees on the, in the roadway.
Have you ever asked if replacement trees be put in?
No.
And just to clarify, since we've had the discussion, it's the typical removal of the tree and the stump?
You're saying the...
No, I'm saying I'm leaving it to the homeowner.
To do everything.
Who wants to remove the trees, and they can remove the roots or...
Everything.
Grind the stumps or whatever. But anyway, we're just giving them permission to remove trees that are in the town roadway.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just have to say, I'm still really troubled that we are just, you know, making a decision about, I know it seems...
Healthy trees?
Well, no, I mean, I, I would, I get the concern about the lawn. I, I understand that. I get the concern about the driveway. I mean, that the roots are very shallow. You know, I guess I just think that, you know, whether it's this or going forward, that we have to, there has to be some mechanism to find out, I mean, how many other trees do we not know we planted? I, I guess that's my concern. Are there just, are there lots of trees out there that we have no idea how they were planted, that maybe they were planted? Lots of trees were planted around the time of Hurricane Bob. Private citizens planted them, the town planted some. I mean, do, do we not have a record of, of that? I mean, I think it's...
That would be a big undertaking for the amount of trees we have in the town and the, you know, seeming lack of, of records. But, but in, so in terms of the policy, I think it really is, you know, kind of has to go case by case. And, you know, just with what Public Works recommended, which is, you know, always bear in mind, you know, the value of precedence. So in terms of the discussion, it was, you know, part of the inquiry was, you know, what is the extent of knowledge of whether the town planted it or not? Apparently, you know, that's not solvable in this case.
I think it's very unlikely the town planted them. The kind of trees the town wouldn't plant during, after Hurricane Bob, they just did not have the time to go and do, you know, public, private property, you know, planting your trees. And the homeowner bought this house in March knowing full well if he wanted to find out that these were green ash trees, the roots were showing. I'm okay with him making a choice to remove them, but not at the town's cost.
Is there any discussion before we call for the vote? All those in favor of the homeowner removing the tree?
Aye.
All those against? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McConity.
Thank you. So am I going to get it? I can remove the trees. At my cost.
Yes, sir.
And you don't have to plant...
Who do I have to notify to do that? Because it's going to be, again, it's going to be effect on the street. That tree is right next to a crack in the street. There's going to be stress on that street.
A good thing to do would be to call the town manager's office, probably tomorrow morning, and work out the logistics if there's anything further the town is interested.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have under business, Steamship Authority, introduction of Bob Davis, general manager, presentation regarding potential New Bedford freight service, and vote to send letter to Senator DiMascio. Welcome all. Betsy, do you want to do the introductions?
I will.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Steve or Bob, you're welcome to introduce yourselves to if, oh, it looks like, here's the matron of honor. Here she is.
The introduction is slide three.
Okay. It's planned.
Okay, my name's Betsy Gladfelter. I'm the Falmouth representative to the Steamship Authority. I just wanted to point this out. This is a picture I took a year ago fall, and most people in the Commonwealth, when they think of the Steamship Authority, they think of how nice it is to go over on a summer day or a fall day for a day on the islands. But for the, for our 45,000 neighbors who are on these, on these islands, it's a lifeline to the mainland, and that's why the Steamship Authority exists. So that Massachusetts Legislature Enabling Act says it's to provide adequate transportation of persons and necessaries of life for the islands of Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. This picture was taken two weeks ago. There was, there were no ships on the horizon for three days before the Coast Guard Icebreaker came in and two of the steamship, bringing fuel oil, food, because many of the shelves were almost empty. And you've probably read about the fact that they had a sewer problem. They had three days of raw sewage going into the, into the harbor until a part was brought to fix the sewage. Okay, what we're going to do tonight is, you know, where are you? You know, already know Rob Munier? Welcome. Rob, Rob is the port council member, and Rob and I are going to give you a very brief overview of what we've already talked about the previous times we've been here. And then, this is your introduction, I think, for the first time to Bob Davis, who's our new general manager. And many of you, or at least some of you I know, have met Steve Sayers, who's the Steamship Authority General Counsel. Bob is going to give you, as Sue had asked, a little bit of his vision for the steamship, which will come after Steve gives a presentation of where we are in the New Bedford study. Okay, I'm just going to give you a little bit about our facilities and our vessels. We have ten vessels. The vessels to the, to the right usually go, or often go on one or the other run, the Martha's Vineyard run or the Nantucket run. The ones on the left, the first two, the Eagle and the Gayhead, primarily are on the Nantucket run. The Governor and the Island Home are strictly on the Martha's Vineyard run, and the Iano is the fast ferry on the Nantucket run. There are five authority members, and the votes are, the mainland votes, Barnstable, New Bedford, and Falmouth have a 10% vote. The two island representatives have a 35% vote. And the authority responsibility is the fiscal responsibility for the Steamship Authority. We also have a port council, which has seven members, and the port council reviews everything, both financial and various policies, two weeks before our meetings. And just to show you the distribution, the authority members, the five authority members are in the star, are starred. The port council members are the red circles, and we have five, six port facilities, the five port towns, and the Fairhaven Maintenance Facility. And the years that are there, like Nantucket says, 1980s, that's when the facility had been redone. And now it's Rob's turn.
So the port council's primary mission is to look closely at the financial aspects of the Steamship Authority's activities, but as Betsy said, we also review all of the other aspects of what the Steamship Authority does. And the budget is supported through revenues, so there's no subsidies. It's basically trying to balance our cost of service with revenues, and then to use any surplus for future projects. And there is an opportunity for the, the home ports to be assessed if there's an override, if there's a overrun, but that has not occurred since 1962. Let's see, one of these is, this shows the annual cycle of income and cost, and as you can see, it's a roller coaster ride. You spend about half the year losing money, and then hopefully during the summer, you make money, and then by the end, you hope to have a little bit of a surplus so that you can move on to the next year. So in fact, when I joined the port council in April of 2014, Bob was the controller at the time. He presented the results, and we'd lost about $8 million already, and by April, I'm like, what kind of business is this? So it turns out, though, that summertime is a good time, and you make it back, and then you start to lose money again towards the end of the year. So you can see where we are in January, we're in the, the losing, one of the losing months, but on balance, if you've planned well, you're going to come out with a surplus. So... So, uh, we don't have the final results yet for two thousand seventeen, but the revenues were about a hundred and six million dollars. And, uh, one of the goals of the, uh, financial operation is to balance the costs, uh, and the revenues between each of the islands served so that they're pretty close. And as you can see, that that is reasonably successful. With fifty-six, fifty-seven percent being, uh, to Martha's Vineyard Service and forty-three percent to Nantucket Service. And just a little bit about the impacts on the town of Falmouth, uh, from a financial perspective. Uh, there's seven hundred and nineteen total employees, two hundred and twenty of which are employ, are Falmouth residents, uh, with about ten million dollars' worth of wages. And, uh, one of the largest employers in, in Falmouth. And obviously, a lot of our vendors support, uh, provide support that are based in Falmouth in the, in the local area. There's also embarkation fees, uh, fifty cents for each ticket sold. And so the, uh, amounts since two thousand four was five million dollars to, uh, Falmouth and about four hundred thousand in, uh, two thousand seventeen. A little bit of a breakdown of where the, uh, uh, revenues come from, in terms of passengers, automobiles, freight, parking, licensing fees, which as we license some of the other carriers that go to the islands, and then other sources of income. And then likewise, the expenses are, uh, broken down this way, about half to wages. Uh, and then the balance through maintenance, depreciation, fuel, insurance, and other. Now, the last couple of years, fuel has been, uh, quite inexpensive, relatively speaking. And so that's been one of the sources of some of the surplus over the last couple of years.
Quick question.
So, just I understand, I understand the way a balance sheet works with depreciation. Is that money that goes into new pro, the new boats that are gonna be built?
Ultimately, but I got the expert here for the answer to that question. I know you asked that the last time, and I'm all prepared to answer, but I figure with the controller here, best for him to answer.
Yeah, so in accordance with our Enabling Act, there's a flow of fund, there's a flow of funds. Uh, because this depreciation is a non-cash item, as we have our, uh, monthly cash balances, uh, any excess first goes to a sinking fund. Not an appropriate term for a ferry company, but it's for retirement of bonds and, uh, principal and interest. Then from there, it flows into our, uh, uh, property replacement fund, to a reserve fund, uh, and, uh, finally to a bond redemption account. Uh, so primarily with the depreciation, that's, um, covering the, the transfers to our sinking fund. And also is the parameters that we set for, uh, transfers to our, uh, property replacement fund.
So that's about ten million, about nine million dollars going into, from this account, plus the eleven million dollar surplus every, this year?
Uh, this, um, twenty seventeen, it'll probably be about, uh, nineteen million will be transferred to the special purpose funds, including the, uh, the bond principal and, uh, interest, as well as our, uh, property replacement fund.
Right, from eleven million dollar surplus.
Um, it's, it's somewhere around the ten million dollars, yes.
Go on, please.
So.
Appropriate time to hand out.
So it's my turn now, and I was going to ask that I come back next week during No Guff Week. Maybe it would go better, but actually, we think we have something that hopefully you'll like. In two thousand fifteen, when Betsy came on the board of the Steamship Authority, she asked the staff that despite all of the issues that have arisen over the last several decades with New Bedford Service, that the staff take an objective look at, if we were going to provide New Bedford Service, how, how would we best do it in order to make it succeed for the long term? And so in April of two thousand sixteen, we produced our first feasibility study. And we put it out to the public. We gave it to all the public officials in all the communities we serve. In fact, I think the town of Falmouth had it on its website as well. We asked for public comment from everybody. And over the course of several months, we received three written comments. One from the mayor of New Bedford, which thanked us for the study and thought it was a great start. Also, he wanted to make certain that it's consistent with their New Bedford Harbor Development Plan. Another from a freight shipper who didn't think that New Bedford Service was worth anything. And a third one from Woods Hole resident Nat Trumbull, who I think is here tonight, who, who offered a lot of comments. But as I looked at his comments, did not seem to take issue with our basic parameters of the service model itself, except for where the money is going to come from in order to, to finance it. But we think subsequent events have answered that question as well. So we went back out in April, uh, that was April two thousand sixteen. Last year, we engaged in the services of Craig Johnson, who is with Flagship Management now. But he was the person who ran our pilot New Bedford Service in two thousand and two thousand one, when he was with Seabalk, which became Havidi Corporation. So he was in charge of operating the service for two years. He thought it had a great potential for success, except it was terminated the following year when the city of New Bedford declined to let us provide the service ourselves. We're getting past all the acrimony. We have a great board. Our goal as a staff is to try to move forward with everyone on board, not, not throw anyone overboard, keep everyone on board. And we've looked at what Craig Johnson did when he came back, and he said that he thought that there was a potential for a private operator to come in, provide the service itself with no subsidy. And that would be very consistent and similar with our model for success for the passenger service that we have from New Bedford. We don't operate any passenger service from New Bedford. When we did in the early two thousands, we lost a million dollars a year. We now have Sea Street provide the service, and they do it, and they make a, a nice profit. We don't know, because it's a private corporation, but they're coming back every year. And they've been carrying, I think, around sixty thousand passengers a year from New Bedford. And two years ago, they started to carry passengers from New Bedford to Nantucket as well. And I think there are around twenty to thirty thousand passengers a year there. So it hasn't caused the islands any money, which means the islands like it. It has diverted some passenger traffic, some car traffic as a result, from, uh, Falmouth to New Bedford. And it seems to be good for all the regional impacts that it has. And that's what Craig Johnson is, uh, recommending for us as well. The first thing we need, however, is a place to park the boat in New Bedford. We went and looked, Craig Johnson went and looked. Everyone's, um, let me try to, which one is this? Do it that way? Yes. Okay, that is the map that we've used. And the issue, of course, is the distance, uh, which is the biggest problem. It would cost three times for us to provide it than it does currently to go, to go from New Bedford instead of Woods Hole. But if someone did it less expensively, um, they could make a profit and charge less and possibly charge about the same tariffs as we charge from Woods Hole. And, um, everyone, Craig Johnson also agrees that going through, uh, Woods Hole Passage is unacceptable in terms of safety. So you have to go all the way down to Quicksore, which is why it's, it's three times as long. So the service model, we thought the New Bedford State Pier was the best option. Craig Johnson thinks it's the best option. Uh, it would be used as New Bedford's freight ferry terminal for a freight ferry service between New Bedford and Martha's Vineyard, provided by a private ferry operator on terms satisfactory to the New Bedford Harbor Development Commission and Mass Development. Mass Development, um, has been assigned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to manage the state pier. Its full name is the Massachusetts Economic Development and Finance Agency. I like that name a lot. It has net assets of just under five hundred million dollars. It has about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars of cash and cash equivalents, and it has another hundred million dollars of investments. It is in the business of bringing development to Massachusetts communities. It has also, I think, been involved with the West Falmouth Library, gave a grant for that several years ago. And it is now in charge of managing the New Bedford State Pier. We could not be happier. The, um, New Bedford Harbor Development Commission is also deeply involved in the whole waterfront. We would like to do nothing that offends them. They are great neighbors. Our port council member from New Bedford is also the executive director of the New Bedford Harbor Development Commission. We've talked with him about this. He thinks the mayor is flexible about potentially having a freight ferry service from the New Bedford State Pier, but we haven't had discussions yet. Because Mass Development has just taken over management of the state pier. They are getting their current operations in order to the point where they find, they think they should be satisfactory. And we've talked with them, and they have said that in a few months, they would like to sit down and talk with us as well. But not until they get their own house in order. We're at, we're at their mercy. They're the ones managing the state pier. We don't own it. Uh, we would like that to be the option. So that's where we stand with that. Yes.
Quick question, and I understand you might, you probably don't have this information yet based on what you've said. But is there any way to gauge the timing in terms of, of when that might be, uh, up and running?
Not for me. Um, Craig Johnson did look at that. And in his report and at his meetings to us, he said that he went out with the pier manager and with, I think it was Ed Anthes Washburn, the New Bedford Port Council Member. And he walked to just those portions of the pier that are necessary for the freight ferry service. He estimated, he said he could have it up and running this year if it were up to him. But he knows that state procurement laws, and Julie knows that as well as I do, that that takes a lot longer. So, if he were, if he's right, but I don't know if he's an engineer. Um, and the previous manager of the state pier, which was the Massachusetts Department of the Conservation and Recreation, had a much higher estimate for those repairs. Um, it could be a year or a year or two.
Thank you. Sam?
Just, just, just to do it for the freight ferry service. Not, they also had an estimate for the entire pier, which is not what we're talking about.
Okay. Sam?
Yeah, what, what other competitive use is there for that, that state pier? So, are there other demands for its use? Uh, is it, are there portions of this area that are currently being used by some other?
Yes, there are. It is, it is a, I, my understanding is that also receives freight from worldwide. What are the small little oranges that come in from Spain? Those are all offloaded there. I've forgotten what they are.
Clementines.
Clementines, yes, they come in.
Thank you.
At the south, at the south end of the, uh, state pier, there's the Cuddy Hunk Ferry, I believe. It has Sea Streak, also operates from there in the summer. And so it would be, but the number of trips that the freight ferry would operate would not really compete with Sea Streak's schedule. So it is used. The vision that New Bedford came out for its harbor front development, around the same time that our feasibility study came out, also has many more prospective uses for that pier, uh, maybe a theater, an outdoor facility for entertainment. But, um, it could be structured in such a way that it would not really conflict with any of those uses, we think. The mayor's biggest objection, and he was quite frank, which is good, was that one of the prospects was to use the state pier to unload all of the garbage trucks coming from Martha's Vineyard. And he said, you know, it's a familiar thing that that's not what his vision of the New Bedford State Pier is because it's right smack in the, in the heart of the city. But what we're talking about here is, is, is different from that.
The estimate from Craig Johnson was about three or four million dollars to do that short-term project. Is that about right?
Two to five million. I think there might have been a wider range.
Okay.
And, um, and the estimate that I believe, uh, the Department of Conservation and Recreation was around nine million. So we're talking under ten million, so, uh, for, for any of that. So that would be the first thing. The second thing is that Craig Johnson is now familiar with operators. He, we would work with him in order to find a private operator. He thinks there are a number of them who would be willing to do this, especially given the oil, uh, uh, problem with the Gulf of Mexico. You have, he said you can walk along the entire coast of the Gulf of Mexico on offshore supply boats, because they're all tied up at the dock. So we'd work with those, um, government agencies and also for the purpose of obtaining funding for the New Bedford State Pier. Hopefully, Mass Development would be willing to fund that. Although we are transferring a lot of money into our, uh, bond redemption account and the replacement fund, we have a lot going on at the Steamship Authority as well. And historically, we have not done well outside of our own small, relatively small operation. We want to make certain that we maintain our financial health because the islands depend upon it. And we want to try something that has worked well with our passenger transportation. If, since Craig thinks that it will also work with vehicular transportation. So that's, that's our goal here. And we also think that that will get the support of the islands because they will not see their cost of living go up. And it's, it's as if Falmouth had toll roads all the way in between Bourne and Mashpee. And every time you came in or out of Falmouth, you had to pay forty dollars, which is what the island residents have to pay every time they go. So we're trying to work with all the factions here because everyone has legitimate concerns. All right.
I have one more. I don't know if it's too early for this question, but I, I was reading in your, uh, report that you're projecting that the best option for commercial service there would be just in the summertime?
Correct.
But will you allow, uh, year-round if somebody proposes it?
We aren't opposed to it year-round. Um, we think that is the best chance for success because what, the one thing, there are several reasons. Freight shippers want reliability. And so they, if you make a reservation to go from New Bedford to Martha's Vineyard, you want to make sure that boat is gonna run, except in the worst conditions. It's a lot more difficult to operate from New Bedford in the winter than it is in the summer. And in fact, I think people who were looking at aerial satellites over these past few, uh, weeks have seen ice just from New Bedford all the way practically out to Nantucket. We were able to operate from Woods Hole, but it would have been questionable, I think, I, I, it to, if we were trying to operate from New Bedford. Buzzards Bay is also more difficult to sail than here. So rather than get into something where people try it and they, they'll never fly it again, or they'll never use that airline, they'll never go use that service. We think it's better, personally, we think it's better that it stay in good weather, become a reliable source. And that's when also there is the biggest traffic problem in Falmouth. So there's a, but we're, we aren't set in stone on anything. We're, we're just, we, we can talk about that. It all depends what the private operator wants. The private operator may also use those several months in order to dry dock the boat and maintain it for an annual overhaul period.
So will it actually be an RFP that goes out? And will it be specifically worded for summer only, or?
We haven't talked about that with the board. Um, if it were an RFP, we would not have a legal requirement to do that. We would only do it as a matter of policy. We have done RFPs before, and we've had, uh, various levels of success. Given that we have essentially in Craig Johnson, a broker, um, it might be better to use him as a real estate agent and try to get, match people up. And therefore, you can tailor what you're offering best with a private operator and not have an RFP situation. And that would be up to the discretion of the board, but that's something that we would consider. We want, we would want to get someone who's comfortable with it and can run the service and not just get, um, not have all the problems that an RFP would have.
Well, that's what I was hoping. So good. Thank you.
Come on, thank you.
So that's, um, and Craig thinks there is someone out there who can do it at their own financial risk, and that's great because we hope that will get more support from the islands. So what are the recommended service parameters? We would allow the private ferry operator to use the Authority's Vineyard Haven Terminal to provide its freight service between New Bedford and Martha's Vineyard. So we are in this. We are, we would be contributing services and money. Same thing as we do for Sea Streak that operates from New Bedford. We allow them to use our Oak Bluffs Terminal. The freight vessel would make two round trips a day on weekdays, excluding holidays during approximately twenty-two week summer season, with the potential to also operate the service on weekends and holidays. It would be up to the private operator. The two round trips a day is basically, that's what one crew can do. It reduces the expenses of the operator. If you try to get a third trip in, you're paying two crews, but the second crew is only doing fifty percent of the work. We would provide the reservation and ticketing services for the freight service. I would integrate reservations for travel on the New Bedford route into our existing reservation system so that customers traveling to and from the vineyard can make reservations in one direction by way of New Bedford and in the other direction by way of Woods Hole. They might be able to take the time to come from New Bedford to the vineyard, but the schedule may not make it, uh, economical for them to wait to go back. So they should be able to come back by way of Woods Hole. Makes it more efficient for the customers. And then it can, um, fill up all, all the trips between New Bedford and the vineyard. Fourth one, shippers of non-hazardous freight would be allowed to ship their trucks between New Bedford and Martha's Vineyard without their drivers. If we are sure that each driverless truck on the vessel is physically met at the ferry terminal by its driver when the vessel arrives there so that the truck can be immediately driven off the vessel. It's a question of space. Vineyard Haven Terminal has no space. So we have similar driverless service between Hyannis and Nantucket. It's, it's a two hour and fifteen minute trip. We would try to make that work on the New Bedford to Vineyard route as well. And hopefully, there are enough truck drivers on the vineyard that could, that can make that happen. Also, if you don't, if freight shippers don't have to have their drivers go with the trucks, it reduces our expenses as well. Hazardous freight, however, is subject to Coast Guard regulations. Drivers have to accompany, um, those, uh, those trips at all times. However, we would still designate tentatively the first trip as a hazardous cargo trip. And then the gasoline trucks, many of which originate from there, may well take that trip. I mean, take that trip. I mean, it's voluntary. They may say that it takes less time or around the same time as to come from Woods Hole. They would have the option. If they don't, then the non-hazardous trucks would then be able to take up that space. And once those non-hazardous trucks make their reservations, we're also recommending that customers traveling with vehicles, just automobiles as well, also be able to fill in the, in the gaps. That's the one thing we didn't do initially back in 2000, and we changed that the second year. We think it's much more efficient, and we will have people who do want to go back and forth between New Bedford and the vineyard with their cars and not come through Woods Hole. And also, people can travel standby on that route as well. And finally, the New Bedford Freight Service would be provided on a summer season basis for an initial period of several years, as agreed upon by all the participants in the endeavor, with the potential to extend the operating season if the parties agree. We thought that several years would be enough. I think one of Nat's comments, Nat Trumbull's comments, was he thought longer. We would simply leave it up to the operator and also Mass Development and the New Bedford Harbor Development Commission to see how long they're all willing to do, because we're all trying to be in here together.
Would there be any intent in reducing the number of freight vessel, freight trips out of Woods Hole if we're doing all this?
It's too early to talk about that for us because the important thing for us, and the important thing for the islands, is that it be voluntary, and that it be something that is perceived as an option, and people look at it and say, this makes business sense to me based upon the time, the tariffs. And if we were to require people to take one route or another, you're going to get backlash for that, and you're going to decrease the chances of success. We would rather have people pick the reservations that they want, and Craig is confident that people will voluntarily pick New Bedford. And I've heard very good arguments from people that, yes, New Bedford is a, not only a viable option, but an attractive option. And you don't have to have that provocation to people that gets people upset. We think that's, that's the way to start.
I'm asking him for it to be a goal of this, to do, that we're trying to have that be one of the goals, not, oh, now it's working great. We'll keep doing all the freight we're doing through Woods Hole, plus have all the state from New Bedford. If we're not going to get that benefit, it's hard to be supportive of-
Well, the option would be to carry even more freight from Woods Hole. It's not that we create demand ourselves.
So, there's going to be no benefit to Falmouth at all or Woods Hole by what you're suggesting?
No, I think there will always be, by definition, less freight that goes through Falmouth for every freight that goes through New Bedford, because it's not a situation where we are creating more demand than what the island does.
Right.
And that's, and we want this to succeed. I mean, that's what we want, and it's, there are people on the vineyard who are probably swearing at the television sets as they watch this, thinking that we're even considering this. I mean, that's what we're trying to broker here, is a compromise with everyone.
Well, you know, there have been recently more interaction between Falmouth, Woods Hole, and the islands, and I'm going to allow a couple of questions from anyone who is in the audience, probably about a minute or two, if you don't mind, Steve. And Rob, if you, unless you had a formal presentation?
I know you had asked about how this had been, the current projects that we have going on in Falmouth.
Let's do that first, then.
So, first off, we have the general administration building. So, back in November of 2016, we awarded a contract to G and R Construction of Quincy, Mass, to build our new administration offices. It's three floors, approximately 32,000 square feet. The front of the building facing Palmer Ave, as you may have recognized, is reminiscent of the old Grossman barn that was there. There'll be approximately 60 workers that are currently in the second floor of the terminal building now in Woods Hole. They'll be transitioned to the new building once it opens. The total project came in about $15,350,000, and we expect to be there somewhere around the first week of February. The second piece of the Woods Hole project had been the temporary terminal building. So, back in November of 2016, we awarded a contract to Triumph Modular of Littleton, Mass, for a bit, a one-story building, approximately 3,600 square feet. And that includes our ticket, our ticket office, a lobby, concession area, the restrooms, a water bottle refilling station, since it's right there at the termination of the bike path now. The building, if you've been down there, as you'll notice, has been wrapped in a not-to-scale nautical chart of the area. So, the total project there was-
Nice touch.
Yes. Two, $2.8 million on that project. So, we did open that, that building for use on December 4th. So, and those two projects were necessary for our marine construction. The ferry slips were in dire need of repair, replacement. So, back in December, our board awarded a contract to Jay Cashman of Quincy for $43,142,000 to start that multi-year project, to rebuild the three existing ferry slips. The next step that you'll be seeing once we move out from the second floor will be, the terminal building will be demolished by J and R Venegro of Johnstown, Rhode Island. We expect that to be taking place sometime the end of February, beginning of March. After that, Cashman will come in. They're already rerouting utility lines that need to be done. They'll be repositioning the passenger gangways in between the slips one and two, and some temporary fenders on the north side of slip one, and then removal of some of the material in the, in the wharf area. But the project's timeline for, for this all is just to be doing it during the off-season. We don't want to be interfering with the, the summer traffic and the conflicts that that, that creates.
Understandable.
So, the total project for that phase of the project is $54,300,000. Kind of going along to the vision, right now we have a full plate. We have the administration building underway. We are starting phases two through four, the Woods Hole Terminal Reconstruction Project. We have a midlife refurbishment of the motor vessel Martha's Vineyard for just over $18 million taking place, and they'll be wrapping up soon. We have a new accounting system that we're just going to, we're going to start to work on implementing. So, one thing we do need to do is we need to finalize the design for the term, for the permanent Woods Hole Terminal Building in Plaza. And during this process, we'll be seeking public input about the design from the community by posting materials on our website and also by having one or more public meetings regarding design. And this is an attempt, part of our attempt to become better, communicate to our neighbors in the Falmouth community, which includes both informing them of what's going on and listening to what they have to say. An example, our efforts, we instituted a community email update, sending out it on a regular basis for the construction that's currently taking place in the, at the Woods Hole Terminal. So, we just started that, and I don't know whether, some of you, I think, are on that email list as well. So, as for going forward, you know, our goals here are to continue on working on the service model for the freight ferry service between New Bedford and Martha's Vineyard. We also have been working with the island towns on the vineyard on the trash, the municipal solid waste issue. And we're looking, trying to, trying to assist them. We have a consultant as well trying to assist them. They had a study done in which they showed that it wasn't economical for the trash to be barged, but we had some different ideas, and so, and our, so our consultant is trying to get the information together with, from the refuse districts on the island to see on the backhaul and the barges from, from the island, to be able to take that to a site off in New Bedford and to, and either truck it out or put it on a trash stream. So, so we're working on that, those efforts as well. And then we're just, you know, overall, just trying to seek to improve our day-to-day operations and our customer service and, you know, our community outreach to make sure that, you know, we're keeping everyone informed. So.
Great report. Questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did want to give anyone who has a question, an opportunity to take a minute and ask that if there, I think it was, you know, it's kind of a momentous occasion here with just discussing New Bedford. I, you know, I think that's a huge step. So, if anyone else has any question with respect to something that was presented, otherwise, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Oh, I guess there are. Go to the, to the podium, Nat, if you don't mind. Inches from a clean getaway. Questions?
Nat Trumbull, two questions. One, if Craig Johnson, Johnson does recommend running a third round trip, which I believe he considered last time or offered to do it, would you accept that? And again, could you repeat the argument for why you'd be against expanding it if Craig Johnson were to recommend it, expanding beyond the 22 weeks?
Thank you, Nat.
I think if a private operator is willing to come in and say that it wants to run a third daily round trip, I think that's something that we would, we would consider. We would have to go back and revisit our original reasons why we thought two round trips are fine, but that's not an issue. That is a principled issue. That's just an issue as to what we felt was the best way of having the service succeed in terms of keeping the operator's crewing costs down because of the Coast Guard requirements. It's not a question of our service, of the Vineyard Haven Terminal's operations. It's just a question of, if the private operator thinks that that is going to have it be more, a better chance of success, that's something that we would consider. I can't say that we will say yes, no, but that's not a principled matter. That's just looking at what the best model is. For the longer season, we just felt that the summer operating schedule, the 22-week schedule that we run from mid-May to mid-October, was the best time to have it all come together, have it start that way when there's the highest demand for freight, which means that you have the greatest occupancy of the boat that goes back and forth between New Bedford. You have the best weather, and you, so you have the best track record that you can build, on which you can then expand later on. If a private operator were to come in and say they want to run it more, we would consider that, again. If they feel that that is the best use of their vessel because they don't want to have their vessel back down on the, on the Gulf for only half a year and bring it up here, that's something we can all talk about. We, we just want to make sure that they understand what the potential problems are with operating longer into the season. And so, it's, it's not that we would object to anything. It's just, it would be subjects for discussion.
Before the second, Megan?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the, so, I mean, the private operator would really be dealing directly with the vendors and creating those relationships with the vendors. The Steamship Authority wouldn't be part of that, correct, in terms of people bringing freight over?
Actually, we are offering the use of our reservation system. So, because it is essential for the service that it be completely coordinated with our service, so that people can come one route and go back the other. So, they would be, yes, Craig Johnson himself, actually, when he did his initial report, he went around and talked to freight shippers to see what their ideas were for the freight service. And he came back from many of those meetings saying that they were interested in the service and they would consider it. So, I think Craig would also be involved in communicating with those potential freight shippers, and then it would be the private operator talking directly with them because they deal with them on a daily basis down there. But also, we would get involved with reservation system.
I'm just thinking that some of these questions about how many and how long are going to be some of the questions that this private individual, or company, rather, has with these, you know, the, the customers that they're going to be, you know, shipping freight over for, and that will be part of, you know, if this happens, I'm sure an ongoing conversation about what those needs are, what the business model would look like if it was extended or throughout the year.
I think when we went with the passenger service from New Bedford, we, that initially was a year-round service, and then we worked with the, the provider of that service over the years, trying to make it so that way, you know, they ended up cutting back the service because it wasn't profitable, and we weren't going to hold them to that. So, I think, you know, in light of this, you know, these are some of the general parameters that we're thinking will work, but we'd be willing to listen to and work with any provider that felt differently and felt that they wanted to expand, expand to three trips, and want to expand to a longer operating season. So.
And the second part, Steve?
And the, the other part was the, that was also during our April 2016 report. That's when we were envisioning that we would have to time charter a vessel ourselves, and that's where, and then get a subsidy because that was going to be too expensive. However, that's why we, that was another reason, I think, we limited it to the 22-week period. But if it's a private operator coming in with its own financial risk, it's all the more reason to listen to what they want to do.
Please. Ed?
So, I'm Ed Dewitt. I was the Falmouth representative during the last New Bedford trial with, with freight, and there is a lot of lessons learned from that, and one of the ones is the two-trip schedule, and Mr. Sayers touched upon that, is that trucks going over from New Bedford wanted to come back to Woods Hole because otherwise they have to wait too long to do that. But, but, and I, I've written a My View piece in terms of how I think the Steamship Authority should be looking at this. But my basic question tonight is, Mr. Sayers commented that the Steamship Authority is very good, and they are indeed very good at what they do, which is roll-on, roll-off. And I would be interested in knowing what other technologies that they've looked at besides roll-on, roll-off. Moving freight to the islands and roll-on, roll-off is an extremely inefficient way. You're moving empty trucks normally in one direction and often half-empty trucks in, in the other direction. In terms of that, there's a lot of inefficiencies in the system, and when you move it farther to New Bedford, you're just adding to new, adding additional inefficiencies into the system. And I think this is something that's ripe to look at with other technologies, and particularly, you know, companies like FedEx have really pioneered new technologies in moving freight and moving it away from roll-on, roll-off. So, I'd love to know what's been considered by the Steamship Authority.
Great question.
We have considered only roll-on, roll-off. That's what we do, and we do it, we think, pretty well. There is a backhaul operation that currently goes on with the vineyard. That's what we discovered when we looked at the barging municipal waste off-island, that we discovered that many of the trucks that carry the municipal waste off-island now actually backhaul, and, and the estimate was that they backhaul all year round for about 80% of what they do. So, it's not as inefficient as some people may think. There, there is material coming in both directions, and even if there was containerized freight going on, that would still be the case with the containerized freight. The biggest efficiencies are getting people to go without their drivers, which is the peak labor cost, which is what we already do on the Nantucket route, and what we're proposing be explored for the New Bedford route as well to the vineyard. We have changed our, our tariffs several years ago, where before we were, we were charging by the weight of the truck, which didn't give the truckers any incentive to consolidate their loads. We changed that tariff system, and I think Bob spent several months, if not years, of his life going through that and having, not only eliminated the truck scales at all of our terminals, but it also meant that people were carrying, going over in smaller trucks and, and with fuller loads. So, it increased the efficiencies there. We're more than happy to consider any other alternatives, but this is what we're set up for, and this is also something that Mass Development might get in the, in business of looking at too, since they're in the development business as well.
Great. Since on our agenda is to send a letter to Senator DeBacito, perhaps he could be instrumental in, you know, spurring the discussion toward the area that Mr. Dewitt has raised in terms of alternatives to roll-on, roll-off. So, that, that's a good point. Betsy?
I just want to bring up one point. I'm on a regulatory board, and I've been involved in a big project in town, and the Steamship Authority is involved in a big marine project, and WHO is involved in a big marine project, and I don't want people's expectations to get up, to get up to thinking that this is something that's going to happen next year. The repair of the, of the New Bedford dock will require, first of all, the money. It'll require design. It'll require permitting, and then it'll require construction. And I can't say that it's going to be X number of years, but it's not going to be done in a couple of months.
Point well taken. It's a complicated project. Megan?
I was just going to say that I think, you know, the model of having, you know, a private- the model of having, you know, a private entity take on this project, you know, my hope would be, as long as the Steamship Authority isn't, you know, cutting off the conversation, and nothing that you said says that, but, you know, I think that private business is going to try and maximize. Maybe they are using different technology because clearly they've got a bottom line that they want to maximize. Perhaps they find another way that is more efficient to move some freight, depending on what ends up coming through New Bedford, you know, if it should get up and running, depending what type of freight comes through. You know, I think that that's going to be something that that individual company is going to really, hopefully, have. You know, that's why I was asking the question before. I just hope that they have that independence to really make those business decisions that make it feasible. And I think along with that would come questions about really maximizing efficiency because every company is looking, you know, to do that, so.
Great point. Sarah?
Richard Hale. I just want to ask if the Steamship Authority has, as part of the plan, a way to measure the impact, the traffic impact? You know, if you have the baseline data that would allow you to assess whether this is just additional freight traffic that's going, is it really impacting the traffic on Woods Hole Road and in Woods Hole itself? You know, do you have the data available now to know what it is, to compare to what it might be once this is up and running?
Good question.
Right now, we already prepare our traffic statistics for each of our trips. So, we do know what's being carried and where it's being carried to, so. This other model would be that we'd want to include some sort of reporting capabilities that they would have to report to us. And if they're using our reservation system, we'd have that information anyway, so.
And how often do you think that would be summarized for a website report, for example, that folks would be able to access?
I would say on a monthly basis, but it just came to my attention that we haven't updated the traffic statistics since August, so.
This has been a very productive meeting, though. Steve?
If I could add to that. It all depends what types of trucks are taken from New Bedford Port as well. Because we have truck statistics, but we include in those truck statistics since, for the last 10 years now, eight or 12 years, every type of truck, including pickup trucks. So, trucks that are shorter than 20 feet long are included in our truck statistics now. They never used to be, which has created a problem with us because it makes it look like our truck traffic is mushroomed so much. But a lot of that has to do with simply the way we've reclassified vehicles. I would say more than 50% of the trucks that are listed on our website are less than 20 feet in length. If those are not the trucks that are going from New Bedford, those are local vendors. Those are local suppliers, tradesmen here, who go back and forth. And regular passengers. Those probably would not be the trucks that will be the principal freight going from New Bedford.
Megan, do you have an ability to sort of, and I know you've done a lot of work on it already, but just to really drill down a little bit more on the individuals, or the companies, rather, that you think would utilize, you know, New Bedford? So, in other words, not the contractors that we're talking about, but the much larger trucks, the ones that have been kind of problematic for traffic here in town that, you know, we've heard a lot of community input about? Is there a way, I mean, I'm guessing a lot of those are the same, you know, companies that are sending trucks over on a regular basis? Has, did Craig, I know you said he talked to sort of, you know, freight companies in general, but a sense of how of, you know, of the 30, I'm just picking numbers, but say 30 regular kind of users that go through Woods Hole, how many of those would find New Bedford to be more of an economic option?
I think Craig believes there are a number of shippers that would, that there are shippers that are headquartered or stationed there or go through there on the way to Woods Hole. And because of his experience when he worked with Seabalk and Aviti, he knows those customers. We don't keep track of them as a regular basis. They show up at Woods Hole. We take them across. But Craig thinks that there are a number, enough of those shippers, certainly, that would fill the boat.
Plus, could we also have the abusers we sent to that?
And that would be a new policy.
I mean, we do have some companies that, over and over again, we say, "You can't be here before this time. You can't be using the backup signals." And have to be reminded over and over again. And I know one of the policies that you guys have instituted is they lose the right to go on the early freight.
Correct, we have, yep.
And another way of saying, "Well, they lose the right to go through a village, and they need to go through a city to be able to..."
There are some commerce issues involved, commerce clause issues. When we did the, we got that pushed back in 2000, 2001. We could not require people to go from one port or another. And then I would hate to tell a Falmouth company that they have to travel from New Bedford to the Vineyard.
If they're not following the rules, I'd have no problem with that.
Thank you very much. Very worthwhile discussion and very important update. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the appointment. Oh, yes, we do. Sorry. Moving too quickly. So, back on the letter with Senator DeMeceto. Is there anything else in terms of thoughts or directions to the senator? We want to include, I assume we do want the letter?
I just thought it would be a good idea to include him in the conversation because he may facilitate some discussion that might be overlooked.
Absolutely.
Particularly his influence in the Mass Development prioritizations of the projects. I think that's worth a try.
So, do you want to do?
It's never going to happen until that state pier is repaired.
Exactly.
Encourage that as quickly as possible to have Senator DeMeceto look into what he can do to support the renovation of the state pier.
Right.
That's a good particular. Yeah, I think that's the key piece of it. You're right. The particulars can be worked out after, but nothing happens until that's functional.
Do you want to make that motion?
If we have any petition data that we've had from the past that we can include with that letter just to let him know that a lot of his constituents are possibly behind us, that might be helpful in convincing him.
I think he's aware.
So, I would move that we send a letter to Senator DeMeceto asking for his support in the renovation of the New Bedford State Pier with one of the purposes being able to support increased freight service from New Bedford to Martha's Vineyard.
And I'll second that.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Now, we're moving on to appointment of the EDIC chairman to fill a vacancy. As the vice chair of the EDIC, I just want to thank Michael Galasso for his long service, very successful service on behalf of the EDIC in leading to a very productive renovation of the train station, bus station. And I also want to mention his leadership in the solar project landfill renovation, really, to include solar energy to the great benefit of the town and bottom line. And also, moving ahead, Jim Fox is going to be helping with the second phase of the solar, so look for that in the news. So, it was the EDIC's recommendation, that Christopher Land, who's not here this evening, but he's general counsel to HOE, and he has stepped up and offered to become the president now that Michael Galasso has stepped down. And his term will end at the end of his appointment to the EDIC. So, with that, as vice chair, I want to, it's required that the Board of Selectmen make the appointment. And with that recommendation, on behalf of the EDIC, I would like to ask for the board's approval. So moved to appoint Christopher Land?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Christopher Land.
Just thank him for his willingness to serve.
And to Michael Galasso, as Sam was saying.
Much thanks.
Next on the agenda is to vote the articles and execute the warrant for April 9, 2018 town meeting.
I reviewed them, and I think at this point, I see none that I would take exception to or argue against.
I think, in the past, have we gone page by page?
Yeah, I never know why, but we do.
Yeah, I was going, I don't know why either.
Probably to give people at home a heads up.
That could be.
But all we end up saying is, "I move Articles 1 through 6."
Yeah, we always mention what the...
Let's do this. Is there any discussion on any of the articles that any member of the board would like to have in terms of moving them?
We have a revision from Mr. Suso of some Scribner errors, basically, that you received this evening. So, if there were a motion, it would be to the revised articles.
Very good point.
Good.
But actually, discussion about content is not what we really do. It's just whether we want to put these on the warrant or not. Some of them, we have no choice because they're petitions. And so, the only ones that we could argue not to put on are the ones that are looked on as requests to the Board of Selectmen.
That's right. I mean, go ahead. No, just, that's really the question. Is there anything that any member of the board would not want to put on that's in that category?
No. And I mean, my feeling is just unless something is, and we really don't see that, but, you know, so contrary to any kind of public policy or, you know, wildly insulting. I mean, I think the, you know, the general practice has been to put them on. It's town meeting's job to vote things up or down after, you know, rigorous debate and after every relevant committee has looked at it and either approved it or given, you know, given it a thumbs up or thumbs down. So, I would move, if we can do it as an entire warrant, please, I would move Articles 1 through 47 for the April 9 town meeting warrant.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Our discussion first, Sam?
Yes. I think there is a Scribner's error that didn't get revised in the revised version. If you go to Page 3, it's under the classification Article 10 at the bottom. But if you see water plant operator, I think that should be plant operator. Am I wrong?
Yes. You are. Correct.
Yep.
So, maybe can we include that in it?
Thank you.
Good call. Good eye.
See that in the original.
And with that, I'll take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we want to look at the numbering of them? Is that a?
My point.
I didn't see anything that was, I thought it was numbered better this year than before. Did you have a suggestion?
No, I just wanted to, sorry, I think we're doing this two different votes. One was, let's get them on the warrant and then say...
Now, how do they get them?
I agree with you. I thought it was structured well. It looks like we could probably get through the budget article the first night, which is something we'd like to see get done. So, I have no problem with the ordering.
I agree. I think it's, I think it's definitely an improvement. And I think things are grouped in ways that make sense.
Much appreciated. Boy, much faster, all the sufficiency. All right, then we'll just sign off.
That's it.
Do we have to vote on?
You need to vote.
So, I would move that we number the articles as presented in this draft.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have to vote to execute the warrant as a separate vote.
Please.
So, move?
Second. All those in favor of executing the warrant?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Great.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion of the Charter Review Committee advertising and application deadline. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You recall that at your last meeting, you discussed this charter review process with town council. And in your board package, you have a copy of a one-page summary that gives some, a structure that gives some direction to how this could move forward. And with the concurrence of the board, I do have a suggestion. If you'd like, it would be in order to consider placing this advertisement in the newspaper Friday of this week and suggesting that the blank on the second paragraph allow applications to be received by 4:30 p.m. on Wednesday, February 28, which gives a little over 30 days, by my count, to allow applications to come in. That would allow you to begin to conduct interviews at the Selectmen's meeting on Monday, March 12, and give us adequate time to notify those who had applied in the interim.
Is there a special application? Or is it the same application we use for regular committees?
We probably use the same application. I'm not aware of any special one, although we could fabricate one if that would be the desire of the board.
Last time, there was a specific one, I thought, having to do with the Charter Review.
We'll be happy to check on that. And if there was one indeed for this committee process, we can utilize that again.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if there is one, and it's more specific, it may make the process a little bit more efficient if all those baseline questions are in the application that we read.
I agree.
I think if we can tailor it so that we can actually ask for information that would give us a better basis for deciding whether the person had the background and experience to actually serve effectively on this committee. Was there also revision in 2010 or 2011? Just in your, in our opening paragraph. It says adopted 1990, revised 1997, 2004. And I'm fairly certain we did it about six or seven years ago.
There was one that was underway as I arrived.
Right.
Yeah, that's got to be mentioned. Good catch.
We will make that adjustment.
Include that. Is there anyone who disagrees with the timeline?
No, I think that's, I think that's appropriate. It's more than enough time. It's after the Super Bowl, so. It's after school, vacation, all those really big things that happened in February.
And after the live survey.
Yeah, after the live survey, so. No one will have any excuse as to why they couldn't...
If we're going to have a different application, we're going to have to have it written by this Friday if we're saying in the advertisement Friday, the application's going to...
I have full confidence that that can be done.
Especially if one existed.
We'll have that accomplished.
Okay, great.
Super. All right, then we'll move on.
Do we have to approve it?
Just a discussion.
We will proceed accordingly.
Great. Next, discussion of the grinder pumps issue, resolution and distribution of costs. Amy, welcome. Sorry it took, sorry it's late. Appreciate you coming.
That's what happens.
You thought the audience was all here for you, right?
I did. I did. I'm Amy Lowell. I'm the Town's Wastewater Superintendent. And I was asked to give an update on an issue that came up earlier in January about the grinder pumps in the Little Pond Sewer Service area. So, the Selectmen are familiar, I think, now with the issue. But I think just to, I was asked to speak about it, I think, to make sure that the town as a whole was better informed about what happened and what the resolution was. So, there was, as everybody knows, a very extreme weather event, cold weather event at the beginning of January from about, the beginning of January to about the 8th. And there were freezing problems with some of the newly-installed grinder pumps in the Little Pond Sewer Service area. About 330 of the pumps are already in the ground. And that's, there are about 370 yet to be installed. And I'm aware specifically of at least 17 issues that came up where individual grinder pumps weren't running because they were frozen. And this is not a pipe outside the pump underground that was frozen, but actually a pipe within the pump unit itself. I first heard about this at the end of the week before, well, whatever. I first heard about several of them at the end of a week. Over the weekend, the issue really came to a head. And there was a comment made about it at the following Selectmen's meeting. And then over the following week, I, we came to a resolution with the grinder pump manufacturer. And the grinder pump manufacturer's rep, representative about how to handle this. One of the problems was not only was this a really frustrating problem for people, but also the initial response of the manufacturer's representative was that this wasn't a warranty issue. Because, you know, freezing is an act of God, weather event kind of thing that they didn't feel responsible for. So, people were pretty frustrated with that. And I had some discussions with the manufacturer's representative, is F.R. Mahoney, and with Ewan, who's the manufacturer, and communicated about how important the Town of Falmouth is to them. We are, you know, we've bought a large number of their pumps through a bid process, 700 pumps, so a $2.5 million contract, almost. And...
And we might be looking for more in the future.
Perhaps. There's also F.R. Mahoney. Part of the, part of that procurement was a five-year warranty five-year warranty for the, for the pump units. And that warranty is not a, it's not a service contract. It's not meant to cover absolutely everything that ever would come up with a pump. In, you know, if there are things people could do to their pumps or have happen to their pumps that would not be covered by that warranty. But my contention was a pipe inside the pump unit shouldn't be freezing, you know, 17 of them shouldn't be freezing in the first winter. So we did come to what I think is a very good resolution on this. And the issue really has turned around pretty nicely. E. One and F.R. Mahoney did recommend the installation of insulation disc inside the top of the pump unit. And it will, this will not prevent, we can't, they can't guarantee, they are not guaranteeing, and I can't guarantee that this will prevent every pump from ever freezing again, but it will certainly reduce the chances of freezing again significantly. The cost to buy those insulation discs without a markup is $38 apiece. And there are 700 of them, so the total cost to procure them is a little less than $27,000. And in the end, it was agreed that that cost would be split by E. One, the manufacturer, F.R. Mahoney, the rep, and the Town of Falmouth. And the Town of Falmouth portion is, it can, I believe, appropriately come from Article 28 of April 2014 Town Meeting, which was the article that funded the construction and is also paying for the grinder pumps as they're ordered. So it's really an addition to that, that cost there, the grinder pump cost there. F.R. Mahoney agreed to install the insulation discs in the 330-so pumps that are already in the ground. And with the others, they'll provide the pumps and we can hand those off for installation in the pumps as they're, as the pumps are put in the ground. It's, it's really not a big deal to put them in the pumps. It's really, the grinder pump units are cylindrical and they have a plastic lid. So they unscrew the lid, put the insulation in, screw the lid back on. There's no excavation. There's no electrical. There's no nothing. It's just unscrewing and putting the disc in it. But we didn't want to have to, I didn't want to have to be paying somebody to go on private property to do this everywhere. So F.R. Mahoney did agree to go back and install those in the pumps that are already in the ground. And there, one thing I should have said about the cost is there is no cost to the LPSA property owners of any of this. There was obviously the inconvenience and frustration for those who had this problem, but they're not paying for the insulation discs and they're not paying for the installation of them. F.R. Mahoney did begin installing them last week. To my knowledge, they've, as, the last I heard, they'd installed a little more than, a few more than 20 of them. And they'll be back. I'm hoping that they'll coordinate that with startup inspections of pumps that are already in the ground. So they'll be able to kill two birds with one stone there. If, they also agreed that if a freezing problem arises again, they, in Falmouth, under this contract, they will consider that a warranty issue, and they will come out for service if requested. So if, for example, hopefully this will not be the case, but if there were a freezing issue between now and when all the discs are installed, they would provide warrant, defrosting service as part of that. To be honest, they are not, they don't have people sitting around in Falmouth waiting for these calls. So it does, there is a 24-hour window within, within which they'd provide service. So if somebody wants that pump now, they might want to either do it themselves or talk to a plumber locally to get it done more quickly. But F.R. Mahoney has said they will provide this defrosting service under warranty from now on, or from last week on. Finally, a small number of property owners paid plumbers to come in and defrost their pump during that period. And we did agree to reimburse them for very specifically that cost in that period of time. We, you know, we have this warranty and we don't want, we're not in the business of reimbursing people for work outside of that, that service agreement. So but, but plumbers and contract property owners who did pay somebody to come in and deal with their pump in that January 2 to January 8 timeframe, we'd said we'd reimburse them for that cost. And I have now, I think I am hopeful that we got the word out pretty well on that. And I've, I've gotten three requests for reimbursement in the range of $150 to $200 so far. So.
Any questions, Doug?
I guess I'm trying to remember what we agreed with Mahoney, with F.R. Mahoney about the service contract. And I thought we had a couple of situations where they were going to be responsible for anything, even if it was something being flushed down the toilet, but we might have to go back to the property owner to, if it's abuse, to cover that. What, how did we actually resolve that whole issue about who was going to, for the maintenance contract of these? Were we going to do it with F.R. Mahoney or were we going to do it with a private contractor? How did we come up with, not with the, understand the warranty issues, but the maintenance of these?
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
So the Board of Selectmen voted a policy that said that the town is responsible for maintenance, but that, and that, so, sorry, going backwards. In the, in the five years after these pumps are installed, they're, F.R. Mahoney provides a five-year warranty. If, if, sometimes what happens is they would, they would remove the pump and take it back to their facility and put in a temporary pump while they take it back and take a look at it. If they go back to their facility and they find rocks in the pump, or they find it packed to the, packed to the top with grease or whatever, they might, they could very well claim that that is not a warranty issue. And in, in that case, the town would have to be going back to the property owner to recover the cost, is, is the way it was described there. So that, the town wasn't covering negligence or inappropriate use of it, but that we would be responsible for collecting that cost from the property owner.
Yeah, where my concern is, they're responding, "Well, we're not going to come out and help you." Or, "We're not standing by waiting for the Falmouth calls and you, it may be a few days before you get service from us." And I did not think that's what we signed up for. I thought that we actually signed up with a five-year service contract with them, saying, "No, actually, they would be responsible," as opposed to actually a DPW or the town going out and servicing these, that the homeowners would know, "Actually, we have a contract with F.R. Mahoney." They, I thought they came very forward, saying, "Call us. We'll take care of it. We'll be there." And so when I heard them saying, "Oh, no, don't call us. We're not responsible."
Right.
That's not at all what my expectation was. And it sounds like it's a little bit better than that, but-
No. I would, I agree with you. I was very frustrated and surprised with their initial response as well. And I can talk with them more, the question you raise is, what is this distinction between service and warranty? And maybe I need to have a more of a conversation with them about whether there's any other specific scenarios that could come up, that would be outside, that would be something we haven't thought of yet. My, my understanding is that, yes, they would come out and do the work, solve the problem, and then we, if there's a real dispute about, or if there's a real question about responsibility, then we, we talk about that.
But then it's our problem.
But, right, but that they wouldn't come out, they wouldn't just say, "Oh, it's not our problem. Don't call us." So I hear what you're saying. And they, they really, I do want to make sure that, that the message gets out there, that they recognize this wasn't, that this wasn't going well. And they stepped back, stepped back and have really come forward, I think, to, to adjust the situation. They're providing something that was not in their original contract. As they have reminded me many times, this was not covered by their bid. They were not required to have an insulation disc at the top of their pump as part of their bid. And they are now providing that as well as installing it. So they really have, you know, come through with something that was not part of the contract that they initially signed.
Thank you.
Great negotiation, too. Sam?
Just a quick question, Amy. With this freezing, was there any damage to the pump at all, or did it just clog it?
I've not heard of any damage, and I don't believe there was. What, the, it's really, there's a small piece of pipe that's, they call it a gooseneck shape, that really is the most vulnerable to freezing. So the wastewater was freezing in that gooseneck. And when the, when the temperature defrosted, temperature lowered, that defrosted. There was not, the pumps shut off. When they, when they're pumping against a, what feels like a closed discharge, they shut off and prevent damage. So I'm not aware of any damage being-
And set alarm.
And set off a loud alarm. Yes.
Sam?
And just one follow-up question to Doug's questions. What's the expected response time from H.R. Mahoney?
So within 24 hours.
And that's, that's an understood part of the contract?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And by, I'm sorry, let me just clarify. By response, that's them getting back to you or sending a tech to your home?
Tech being at your home.
Okay.
They, they're responsive on the phone. You call them and they-
Or just not this, not necessarily-
Right, I'm sorry. What I mean is, you, they don't, they don't take a message and call you back within 24 hours.
Correct.
They answer the phone and, and the, their obligation under the warranty is to get somebody out there within 24 hours.
Madam Chair, could I just interject? Our view is that this was a misstep that's since been corrected.
Yep.
And the reason is, as Amy noted, it involved a condition that no one contemplated.
Right.
And we regret that that occurred. And we apologize to everyone that was negatively affected. But thanks to Amy and Ray negotiating with both entities, that has now been put behind us. And we think everybody has been held harmless. We regret the inconvenience and the irritation right around the holidays. That was highly unfortunate. But we continue to work through this with the original intent, as Doug has referred to as well.
Yeah, I appreciate. You're absolutely right.
Thank you, Amy.
I hadn't mentioned what, I guess, what I think is obvious, which is this was a very extreme weather event. You know, cold wind, no snow cover, and, and very cold for a very long time. Certainly could happen again as soon as next year, and that's why we need to protect against it. This is, F.R. Mahoney has said that this is not a problem that they've had widely. I did speak with another town, Southwick, Massachusetts, installed 300 pumps, 300 grinder pumps 10 years ago. And they had about eight of their 300 froze in the first year. So they put insulating discs in and have not had a freezing problem since, including this recent winter. So-
Good to know.
Not a guarantee, but it certainly made me feel more comfortable with this solution.
Good solution. Sam?
I think it's important that we not badmouth E. One and F.R. Mahoney also, because they have stepped up. They've taken-
Yes, they did.
-the responsibility. They were obviously investing a fair amount of money-
Yes, they did.
...to remedy the situation. So I at least want to give them credit for being honorable through this unanticipated problem.
Appreciate that.
Doug?
It's good that they take care of it, but at the same time, if there's an insulation disc that's available, it probably should have been included in the first place, here in the Northeast.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's probably why they did the right thing now.
They said, "We won this bid by $12 per pump." And, you know, that's, that, just to tell you where they're coming from. It was a very competitive bid. And Myers, you know, anyway, you don't need to get in all that. But the, I think they have come through with an excellent solution at this point.
And I'm sure it's a practical solution as well, because they're going to expend a lot more money coming out for many, many service calls if it's something that continues to happen like that. So, so I think it sounds like it's a good resolution. Thank you. I know that, you know, going back and forth and dealing with, you know, dealing with creating, creating a resolution for this was a lot of work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Next, we have a review of the Town Manager Evaluation and to discuss future goals. So the way this works is that every member of the board makes a written evaluation on a form of the Town Manager. As chair, I then collect it and average the math scores and also compile the, the narrative comments. And so I just kind of wanted to take some time and go through how the evaluation came out this year. In terms of the performance on the prior year goals, with respect to implementing an employee performance management process, there were four scores that the work was in progress. One that it was not undertaken with respect to developing a community development group that harmonizes planning, the Board of Selectmen and other regulatory boards. There were five in-progress scores with respect to developing town facilities plan to improve efficiency. There were five in progress. For completing Phase 2 of the ESCO energy, there were five in progress. For managing multiple department head transitions, which was big this year, there were five in progress. With respect to working with selectmen on the senior center building working group, there was one complete and four in progress. With respect to pursuing the town hall restructuring, there were five in progress. With respect to pursuing development of town archives in collaboration with the town clerk, there were five in progress. And with respect to pursuing the town bond rate, which was a good success last year, there were four in progress and one complete. And then there's a compilation of performance standards, the first one being organizational integrity. That is based on an always exceeds high ranking of the number four, all the way down to fails to meet expectations of a zero. The average score Mr. Suso received on that integrity was 3.4. Teamwork was 3.4. Interpersonal skills, including treating others in a fair and consistent manner, that was a three average. Next was planning and flexibility. That was a three. Written and oral communication was a 3.2. Job skills was a three. Problem solving and decision-making was a 2.8. Initiative was a 3.2. Management effectiveness was a 2.4. Administration was a 2.8. Knowledge, including technical knowledge, was a 2.8. Organizational relationships was a 2.8. Leadership qualities was a 2.6. Organization, including adhering to priorities and deadlines, was a three. Planning, including short and long-term plans to meet future needs, was a three. And then I just want to raise, there were four sets of comments that were included in the survey of performance. And I just want to pick out a couple of the phrases that the Board of Selectmen used to describe the Town Manager's performance. One of them was excellent choices in his recent hires. Another one, future goals should include public outreach for town hall reorganization and implementing online permitting, preferably through cloud-based technology. Another one was many towns marvel at Falmouth's low tax rate. We would not have been able to sustain it this long and this well without Julian. Next, Julian is always readily available and responds quickly to concerns and requests by the Board of Selectmen. Julian is able to track down answers to questions regardless of complexity, which assists this board in decision-making. So these, these scores are useful in the strategic planning that the board does. And I just want to take a minute and ask any of the board members if they wanted to add or maybe mention something that I didn't choose to summarize.
I had a question about the, you know, we're asked to evaluate Mr. Suso's interactions with department heads and effectiveness and communication in those areas. And I don't really feel personally qualified to do that. I mean, I know it's part of the evaluation, but the fact that this came up and had to be done fairly quickly, and I was kind of surprised that I was being asked how he interacts with town management, you know, department heads, because I don't really have personal knowledge of that. So, and I think his scores suffered on that part because, maybe because of our lack of knowledge, or maybe, I shouldn't speak for others, but I don't feel like our work that we do really gives us that kind of information unless we go looking for it.
Or we, or we receive a complaint.
Right.
Would be the other way. You know, this is a format that was overhauled last year by Doug and Sam. And a lot of those things that were kind of difficult to achieve, I think were addressed, but maybe that's another one, next time it's overhauled, we can look at.
I mean, maybe next year, I'll know better and I'll kind of ask around a little bit more, but I mean, still-
Sure, Megan? No, I was just going to say, or it could just be addressed with just having a little bit of a longer window.
Right.
So that if someone feels they don't have that information, frankly about anything, that they have a little bit more time to, to dig, to give an accurate or more appropriate comment or score.
Yeah, maybe if we could-
Just having a little bit more time.
Receive it earlier.
Yeah.
That's always good. Sam?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think the reason that we put this in there is that, you know, the Town Manager is a manager of managers.
Right.
And we, that is the most leverage he gets in terms of quality services to the town. So we need to evaluate that, you know, how we structure that, you know, if we can find a better way to assess it, fine. But, I mean, I think it's illegitimate.
I'm not saying it's illegitimate. I'm just saying, I'm not sure how qualified I was to make those, those evaluations.
Maybe if you'd had more time, you could have touched base and-
I could have maybe, right.
The timetable of receiving was probably my recommendation, because last time we did this, I made a longer timetable and people-
Wait till-
Forgot about it. Didn't get it done by the time, by the time, when you have too long a timeline, it often means it doesn't get done even by the timeline. And with a shorter one, it's more likely. But I think we can probably come up with something a little bit longer to, to have that. to, without that.
Good point. Any other comments or thoughts you want to offer? Mr. Suso, did you have any kind of thought in terms of the, of the board's evaluation?
Well, only Madam Chair, that, as you know, you and I met and reviewed this, you know, summary document and did have the opportunity to sign an initial that we did discuss it, and I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the thoughtful feedback from every member of the board. And I've had the opportunity to have several follow-up discussions on different aspects of this, which I appreciate very much and look forward to having that continue in terms of the productive feedback that is so helpful to me in terms of fine-tuning the way that I deliver the services that you've hired me to, to do as Town Manager, so.
And in terms of goals going forward?
Yes, on the, I did transmit again to the board in draft form, a list of a pretty aggressive list, I guess, for lack of a better term. Our goals for the year just completed had, were a little fewer in number in the final form, and my suggestion was to bring this to the board in draft form for you, perhaps, if you're willing to give it some consideration, perhaps discussion tonight, perhaps not, depending on your preference, and consideration for developing a consensus list of goals, conceivably as early as your next meeting, your first meeting in February, and I think that's the process that we followed last time, was getting some draft goals out, tweaking them, adjusting them, expanding them in whatever manner the board would prefer, and then voting a consensus package at a subsequent meeting. And I would be very comfortable with that if that would be the pleasure of the board.
Sure, and, you know, I think it might be important to just raise a couple of these issues. I know that Doug had some, you know, raised the issue of the fire department, and I note that that was kind of forwarded in the draft, where at number five, we're talking about analyzing and evaluating the fire department staffing requirements. We're looking at cost-efficient fire station locations. Another goal, completing Phase Two of ESCO Energy. Another one, continue to pursue implementation of community development group as part of the town organization. And I think that, just stopping there for a minute, you know, I think the board has said for a couple of years, community development is important coordination, and I think that you took hold of it here when you, when you translated into your own goal by making it clear that you're looking at it as part of the town organization. And so you're kind of looking at what's, what we already have and trying to really build a better mousetrap from what's already available. So I think that that's really important distinction. Of course, we have included the senior center building committee, coastal resiliency, continuing regional initiatives on wastewater, and so, you know, those are a couple of the things that I, I think the members of the board had raised, and then you've compiled in this list of goals. So I think it does make sense to maybe, you know, if anyone wants to give us some thought and look at the next meeting, certainly Megan and then.
No, Sam, I understand.
Sam?
Yeah, I just want to say that, I mean, it doesn't make any sense for us to, you know, agree on more than five or six goals. And, but when I looked through this, an awful lot of these goals, I think, are things that you would delegate to another department chairman, and then you just simply supervise the progress on those. And so I think those could be proper, and they also kind of fall in under the job description.
I agree with you too.
Which, to me, you don't elevate those to make them a personal goal for the next year. And so I would call these with that in mind, like, when I looked at nine through 13, those are all ones that as, if I were the manager, I'd be delegating to somebody else and I'd be tracking those. And, but those wouldn't become a personal goal for me, in that position. But I think there are goals that should be elevated, because we're basically saying, this is where we want you to put that extra effort. This is something that's important for the town, that we think deserves a priority. Those are the kind of things that I would use to sort of call this down and perhaps even reward them. I'm not sure how you can separate a facility plan from an organization plan, so I'm not, I see that those, I feel like those should be merged. So I think there's some ways that we can actually look at how we can refine this, but the one thing I will say, Julian, is this is a great reminder of all the things that you have to keep track of, and I, and you have my respect for the level of detail that you're constantly in touch with. When I have discussions with you, you're bringing up issues that I haven't thought about, and obviously you're in the trenches more than I am, being the man on, on the spot in all of this, but, yeah, this is helpful to remind us of the things that you're keeping track of and monitoring all the time. But I think in terms of setting goals for you, we could probably pick out the ones that we want you to prioritize and say the rest of it falls into the sort of the day-to-day doing business kind of responsibility.
Good to do that, maybe the next agenda item. Megan?
I was going to say, actually, I would love to do the live survey and just hear a little bit of community input. I mean, they're not speaking directly about Julian at all, but they may raise some things that we haven't, you know, haven't thought of, or that we hear a lot of folks having concerns about something in particular. So since it's so soon, I think it would be helpful to have that survey, see if anything kind of guides us, see if anything that we hear guides us in our, you know, direction when we come up with, I agree, you know, five or six particular goals, because the timing of it, I think, is, is really helpful, and then it's so close, and, and we are hoping to get that, that input from the community. That's sort of the whole point of it, is how does the community input guide what we do as, you know, a board, and what the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager do.
Makes a lot of sense.
And you'll have that Saturday meeting before your next regular board meeting, so it will be very timely.
Perfect timing.
Not losing any time.
Great suggestion.
Exactly. Anyone else?
I just want to agree with Sam's idea that some of these are job description items, that if we take them off the list, I'm sure Julian's still going to do them anyway, but I think it's a way of us saying, this is where priorities fall. And it may, it may even be efficient that I think we could, tonight, say, as in, these six or seven could be crossed off, and then we figure out what ones, do we either consolidate or add at the next meeting?
Sure. Do you want to, Sam, do you want to kind of call this a little bit? Doug?
I'm not, I mean, I would, I don't mind taking this home and just sort of thinking about how I might rephrase some of it and consolidate some of it, and then come back and say, here's, here's, here's a candidate, you know, but I'm not sure that we can do that now, or that it's useful.
All right, we'll do that at the next meeting, and we'll have the live survey information, and it'll kind of all come together.
Maybe we'll just kind of highlight some of these that are in prioritization, maybe renumber them as well.
Right.
Thank you. That'd be wonderful.
Great. Okay, next we have minutes of meetings. First, the public session for January 2nd.
Madam Chair, on page two. Oh, yes, I think in the second paragraph from the top.
Yeah.
It says, "Three additional firefighters, one detective." Might be good for somebody reading this to say, "Police detective," since it's not a, not part of a, you know.
Okay.
A fire detective, so to speak, in turn, determining the cause of a fire.
Okay.
And then, coming down to the, one, two, three, four, five, fifth paragraph or line, says, "The budget is funded through levy capacity and new," should be growth, right?
Growth.
Must be going down.
You might, you must have been going somewhere.
Kid issues, teeth issues.
Anything else on that one?
Well, it's more of a, just an editing, and I'm going to pass on that, it's more editorial than anything else.
And I have just, just a clarification at the bottom of the narrative on page three, just above the liquor license, annual licenses. Mr. Brown noted they just voted the assessment. I don't think there was a vote of any assessment that I was referring to, just that the speakers from New Jersey had recommended that we might consider these different assessments in these coastal zones.
So there was a discussion of assessment?
It was a discussion of future planning.
All right, so with those changes, does anyone want to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve as edited and release to the public.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, January 8th.
Okay, let's, yeah, I have one edit, I caught on page five. Yeah, if you look at, you see section five, the paragraph just above it.
Yep.
And the third line that should, that says, "Mr. Johnson Staub would want to look at," I think that's procurement.
Yeah, that makes sense. Procurement.
Peter, is that?
Yep, correct.
Because that word doesn't resonate with anything I know.
I'm not sure that's in my vernacular.
And then one more correction on five. If you look at the bottom of the first paragraph under that, section five, it's, there's a reference to 2011, I think that's the 2019 budget.
Makes sense.
He has asked, "If it be for a 20, it should be 2019 budget." And then I would say. Whoops. Oh, budget allocation, that's what it was. So it really should say, "For a 2019 budget allocation."
Okay.
I think I have one on, have you done those?
Yeah, there's a typo on page six. Under nine, where it says, "Union," it's the last word under the second paragraph, I think it should be opinion.
Good.
Perhaps, but.
Doug?
So on page two, in the middle of that page, or maybe actually, fourth paragraph from the bottom, Mr. Brown noted, "When asking for updates, mentioned to take note of the social media policy and ask for compliance." And I'm just trying to make sense, and I don't really remember what I said, but I don't think that actually makes sense there. I think what was, we're talking to candidates for job positions.
No, may I, may I interject? It's when we're getting updates from committees.
Right.
That we mention them to take note, when they're coming before us.
Oh, okay.
We mention that they take note of the social policy and ask for compliance.
Okay, that's right.
Because we had talked about how we can't enforce.
When we were getting updates from committees. Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
So how would you edit it so that somebody would understand?
Well, when, when receiving updates from committees, I guess.
From committees?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that straightens it up.
All right. I move that we approve as edited and release to public.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have executive session on January 8th.
I move that we approve and not release for public access.
Session one.
Session one.
Session one.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Session two, January 8th.
I move approval and not release for public access.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have individual Selectmen reports. Doug?
I attended the second meeting of the Coastal Resiliency Stakeholders Meeting. It was interesting, and not as well-attended as the first one, unfortunately, but still good, good gathering. We had a robust discussion about possibilities and where we're at amongst the group, so it's turned into a pretty good discussion, very interesting. I also attended the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee meeting this past week, and they're still, you know, working towards, you know, their planning for what's going to be next. They seem to be kind of taking a wide view of what their mission is and doing some long-range planning. And I didn't speak regarding anything that was really on their agenda, but at the end of the meeting, in the comment period, I asked them to consider whether or not they were going to be asking for any beach nourishment as part of their short-term planning. Didn't get very much of a reception on that, and in fact, Melissa Frey texted, "I think we have better things to spend our money on." So, made me think that maybe, with regard to beach nourishment, maybe that might be more of a Selectmen's management type of thing, because it's really just for the quality of the beaches in the interim. Some of it might be considered coastal resiliency, because if you have a well-nourished beach, it's less likely to do damage to the road, but I think really it's more of a nicety and a nice amenity for our town, as well as protecting the road.
It sounds like, I mean, that might be something for the Beach Committee to have even a discussion with Coastal Resiliency about, you know, so that their positions are clarified, and then we would take the recommendation through the Beach Committee, I would think.
Maybe, yeah. Because I think we might want to kind of look that way a little bit, because when you look at, for instance, Falmouth Magazine, and it shows, what are all the great things about Falmouth? One is the bike path, it's like one of our number-one things.
Right.
It's kind of endangered along the coast there. Another one was, you know, people enjoy the beaches, but a lot of our beaches are in decline. So I think it's a management issue that we might want to consider, it's how we run our town.
Well, in this year in particular, we've had more storm damage on the beach than I ever remember. I mean, there are walls and piers and all kinds of things that were never seen in the last 15 years that are quite prominent now, because they're, you know, the beach roads and gets swept out.
Right.
Sam, did you have a report?
Yes, and I have a full one, so you'll have to excuse my length. I did attend the first of the FinCom reviews of the 2019 proposed budget, that one pretty, that was quite short, because they weren't quite ready to get into the details. Also, the Affordable Housing Committee. I also went to a ZBA hearing for the Helms Circle project, also, the developer calls it the Little Pond Village, which is, you know, off of Alma Road in Worcester Court, kind of on that corner, just beyond the houses along Alma. And I wanted to mention it in particular, because there was a planning board member that basically endorsed the project and thought it was actually quite complimentary to the Cape Cod Commission study of the Davis Strait area and how we would redevelop that area. But another person raised the issue of the flow-neutral bylaw, and the fact that this development would essentially pose, like, about 80-some bedrooms of use into the sewer system, rather than the original project, which was scoped to be seven independent units, which would add up to maybe 28, 35 bedrooms, so that the service, the sewer service would be considerably greater. And I know we've had a number of requests for hookup to the sewer by various owner, property owners, and we keep telling them, "We're going to get to it someday." But I'd like to see us actually come up with a plan on how we're going to deal with that, and since it kind of falls back onto this project.
That's going to be part of the agenda for the joint meeting coming up. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Suso.
Well, we have a discussion on that. One of the things that we made clear was we were going to complete the entire project. In other words, get everybody hooked up, as Amy indicated, there are 370 folks with grinder pumps alone that are yet not part of the system. So my memory was, we made a commitment to fully complete all the improvements of that project, and then take on the list of people, and we have a working list, as we know, and develop a strategy for approaching that. It is going to take special state approval, those are not, that will not be an easy thing to do, to be altering that boundary, because it is part of a regulatory decision made by the state. But we determined that we would take all that up once we completed the entire project and not to piecemeal it in between.
But I think what Sam is saying is something different, which is kind of a larger question, which is, you know, the capacity overall, and if, I mean, obviously if it's a, you know, some of these affordable housing, we've talked about how, you know, the timing of that and, and the role that the town can play in controlling that is somewhat limited at times, but I think it's a great question to have. I think it would be a broader question to have at our joint meeting, about how are we looking to utilize the capacity of that, that system, you know, and not necessarily priority, but, you know, are there priorities? Are there ways that we're going to try and hook other folks up with the challenges that you're noting about the regulatory challenges? Or, you know, just in general, how are we looking at that resource, managing it going forward? Because it is an area that, you know, has a number of development projects proposed coming down the pipeline, for, for better word.
You know, along the same, when we had the report from the Water Quality Management Committee, maybe I misunderstood them, but they suggested that in fact they could add additional properties to this, our current wastewater treatment plant. And if that's the case, then there must be a reserve. So we need to be taking a look at exactly how we want to manage that, and, you know, what the timeline might be, because obviously developers can't wait forever. They've got money tied up in projects, and developers.
They've got money tied up in projects, and developers, we need to be fair to them. If it's going to take us five years to come up with availability, then they shouldn't be applying for projects at this point.
Sure.
So I'd like to see us come up with a really evaluation of just what it's going to take for us to make the decisions and where we want to place priorities, if that in fact is the case. Are we talking about expanding the sewer service and still using the same wastewater treatment facility that we have right now? Are we talking about package treatment facilities? I think we need to get that tied down, and I'm just asking for that to be addressed at some future time.
That'll be part of the joint meeting. I think when, when you have water quality people there and you have planning people and all of that, I think that's, that's the perfect time. Doug, I know you have a question.
Well, I actually didn't, hadn't really finished my report. I did actually attend the Water Quality Management Committee week, this week also, and this exact subject did come up. And we have plenty of potential for treatment at our plant. We don't have the capacity for discharge, and that's exactly what Ms. Vivaldi was talking about when she said that we're only approved to discharge a certain amount of wastewater effluent. And so it'll be up to the developer of that development to get approval from the state to increase that number. But overall, when they look at these planning initiatives, like the Shorewood Drive and Acapescot, potential searing, right now, they can still send it to the wastewater plant, and we can always expand the capacity of treatment, but we can't discharge, and we don't have permission to discharge any more than what we have. And so we're going to have to find more places, and the asphalt pipe is still a potential idea, which Mr. Waterbury has been pushing for, for years. It might work. But the other thing at the Water Quality Management Committee meeting was, they're consciously paying attention now to road paving projects, and the DPW is going to be doing a road paving project on T-Ticket Path, and they're going to elevate the roadway a little bit by about a foot there, right where it's next to Purge Pond. And they're not immediately doing this drainage work, but they're looking at options for maybe a bio-swell or.
Permeable barriers.
Some filtered catch basins, rather than just the asphalt pipe that goes now.
Smart.
They're under pressure to do the road, but they're keeping it in mind as a back, you know, an additional project afterward. So they're actively looking at practical options as they go along, so it's great.
Nice.
Okay, well, but from a planning standpoint, if we're proposing about redevelopment and infill of density, which is going to put greater demand on the sewer system, we need to know about those limitations, whether it's.
Right.
You know, discharge from the plant or treatment of the plant. To me, I put the whole thing together.
Yeah.
It's a limitation on the capacity of our current water treatment facility.
Correct.
And so we've got to be forward-thinking about this, because we are talking about economic development and economic vitality, and I think those are areas that we've got to begin to focus on a little more clearly. And if we want developers to come in here and help us develop some of this, they've got to know where the hard stops are. And if we've got hard stops, maybe we need to be looking at moving them out now to make it, you know, more tractable possibilities, some of the things that the planning board's talking about.
Sure. But we'll have, we'll have discussion on that coming up.
Can I just interject? I know that this Homa Circle proposal is not going to overtax the town's capacity. Period.
Yeah, and they'll have to do their own work to get it approved by the state.
Okay.
Going outside to other geographic areas certainly merits some additional discussion. This is within a geographic area.
Okay.
As, I know, I think you and I are in agreement on that.
Well, right now, the ZBA has no testimony to what the capacity is, to allow them to make some kind of an informed decision. They continue the hearing, but we need to be providing that kind of insight to them, or they're going to make decisions on bad information.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about this.
I'll work for the wastewater superintendent to make certain that's clarified.
Okay. Thank you.
It did raise an interesting question, though, for the Water Quality Management Committee now, is looking at these potential sewer areas and looking at what the potential build-out would be. And you have no other standard procedure than to say, "Normal zoning would allow for this." Doesn't take into account 40B. So if you had six or seven 40Bs, it really would change.
Changes the numbers and the capacity.
So it's an interesting problem.
Well, and, you know, another question came up on my line, but we've allowed now all of those parcels in the little, in the Falmouth Heights area and Maravista, too, to build up their homes and add additional bedrooms, because they're on the sewer.
Right.
That's going to add more flow, right? So I, I don't think we have a handle.
We're getting a little deep for just selectmen's reports on the agenda.
All right. Okay, so you're on an agenda. That was my point. The other thing, I attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting last, this past Friday and Saturday. It's an excellent meeting. I'm sorry more of you couldn't make it, but it's really instructive to hear Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito talk about where their priorities are. They are definitely people that came out of local government, and they've assured us in this assembly on record that, you know, they want to be able to support, they want, they believe it's key for economic vitality to take place at the local level. And so Governor Baker announced that there's, and I think you've seen it in the news, there's a three-and-a-half percent increase in state revenues, and they expect to pass that same level of increase through Chapter 70, which is funding to education, Chapter 90, which is local infrastructure work, and also through the Undesignated Fund. So it was pretty positive news, and that his budget proposal to the House, of course, is the outfit that will make the final decisions, was that they would pass on these increased revenues in terms of revenues to us in the future. So that was pretty good news. Also heard a presentation by Secretary Jay Ash, and this was recently in the news, and it's the Governor's Housing Choice Initiative, which has to go through the legislature. And got a lot of our interests who are sort of interested in affordable housing development and how we might be able to tap into the funds. Well, the goal was to build 135,000 new units in Massachusetts over the next five years. Well, if you couldn't build that many units, you've got to pick the most productive areas, right? And so one of the prerequisites is that your town has had to have a minimum of housing production and units of 5% over the last five years. We aren't there. So it basically means that we're not going to be able to tap into this from what was conveyed to us at this meeting on Saturday morning. So that was useful information to find, so we don't spend a lot of time until we can definitively find out whether we're going to be eligible or not, you know? A lot of people were very optimistic, that, "Oh, my goodness, this might be a source of funding for some of the affordable housing problems." And we know with the change in tax structure at the federal level, tax credits are not likely to be as abundant, and that's going to, you know, basically bottleneck a funding that will go to some of the 40B projects that require subsidized housing, subsidized revenues.
That's an interesting kind of a counterintuitive point, because you would think if we're struggling to make the 5%, they would want to help us more.
If you have to look at it from a business standpoint, where do you want to invest? Where are you going to get the most production? So they're looking at towns that basically have had the most success in the past and putting money in there, because they want to get to that 135,000 new unit, see?
Okay.
So I understand after they said it, oh, but that's, that's the challenge. Now, they, by the same token, they talk about how they actually help smaller towns or rural towns with things like mass works and what have you. So there are options within the state budget that, you know, I think we can potentially go after, but that's the kind of thing you learn at a meeting like this, and I guess that's what I want to say, is that that's the value to me. Just quickly, there was a meeting of the Cape Cod Selectment Counselors Association. Sue made it to that piece and was there to hear a briefing on the three resolutions that MMA voted on on Saturday morning, and I voted on our capacity. Julian was with me, so I guess the two of us voted. The three resolutions basically were a fiscal partnership between town, cities, and state, and it's basically saying, "Please keep funding state local initiatives." And needless to say, that passed unanimously. Opposition to the ballot question that would reduce the sales and use tax from what it is today currently to half, about 3%. And that's, they were definitely opposed to that. There was at least one person that got up and defended that. But I'd have to say that the vote was about 97% against this and 3% in favor. It was pretty obvious. And then the last one was supporting local state, federal efforts to combat climate change, which of course, being this, the town with the most coastal area, is definitely, and that was another unanimous vote by all of Massachusetts, not just simply the coastal cities. So those are the votes that I cast. So on your behalf, I hope that you don't have a problem.
Also, good to me.
Anyway, it's, it was my fourth year going, and I asked myself, you know, do I really want to do this again? But I have to say, having been there and had, and gotten to listen to so many, and I also, probably because I didn't have anybody that I knew particularly, I met and sat with and talked with a lot of people from, who were selectmen and town managers and town administrators from other towns across the state. And it is, it is really a worthwhile experience to find out. You're, you're not the only people challenged with the issues that we have, you know, there are other people, and they are really intelligent, creative, problem solvers, working hard. I have to say, I came away buoyed by the intelligence of the people that were there, the speakers and what have you. I mean, Massachusetts really is out in front, I think, in trying to deal with these, and the fact that we are doing it at the local level and not just from state down programs, I think really inspires a lot of people, and we get a lot more leverage out of the talents that we have in Massachusetts. That's it.
Megan, your time is already used.
I'll just say quickly, something that no one's touched on, but I did go to the No Place For Hate Falmouth Martin Luther King Breakfast. Really wonderful event, incredibly well-attended. I think year over year, there are more attendees, and it is always something that lifts my spirits, and when you get to see the long arc of folks who have been, you know, fighting the good fight for a long time, you are inspired by people who've been doing it for six decades, and then there were young people who are students in school right now that, you know, you hope are going to carry that torch forward. So a really great event from No Place For Hate Falmouth, which always puts on, you know, really compelling and important programs, so.
Really great. Doug?
More so.
Peter?
Very briefly, there is an event this Sunday, in case you want to work both Saturday and Sunday this weekend. Engage Falmouth, which is a separate, private nonprofit, is holding an event, and the thrust of the event, as I understand it, is to recruit volunteers. Mike Palmer has agreed to represent the town and will be there with information about the committee vacancies that are, need to be filled.
Thank you for.
Thank you to Mike Palmer.
Absolutely. And thank you, Peter, because I know I handed it off to you and said, "Peter's the person you want to talk to." So I, you know, thank you for making that happen on short notice.
And where is it going to be?
In Walk White, at the Congregational Church.
Great.
And I think it's three to six.
Correct.
Yes. And it was incredibly well-attended last year. It's all action-based, so anyone who, there's a wide spectrum of organizations that are represented. So if you have any interest in really essentially any topic in the world, there will be some group there that probably touches upon that, so.
Announcement, I can't make, I don't remember the date and time, but I know that Nancy Taylor had announced a meeting on the, on fields use.
Yes, I think it happened last Thursday. But I think there'll be some ongoing conversations.
And it was quite sad to see in the paper that Nancy has decided that she'll be retiring at the end of this year.
Incredible service. I mean, there'll be more time to thank Nancy, but certainly has a lot of people gasping and, you know, appreciative of what she's done so far. But the school committee has a great plan, and they're going to, this is a great lead time, and they're going to have lots of time to talk about what, you know, what the next best step is.
One last announcement?
Yes.
Falmouth Water Stewards received a grant from the Falmouth Road Race to buy two water stations. So the first preferred location would be the Falmouth Heights Ball Field, and the second one, we're still deciding exactly where to propose it. We'll be coming to you soon for permission to put them in.
Great news. And I know you've been working on this for a while, so thanks for that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Is there a motion? Oh, so town leadership report. My timing is so bad today. My timing is terrible today.
I assume there was a reason that you were, like, saving the last word.
The best for last. Best for last. Well, it's kind of been bouncing around tonight.
Happy to go last. Just a, as board knows, I was pleased to recently confirm receipt of a $140,000 grant from the state to allow the continuation of the innovative regional collaborative work on wastewater involving Falmouth and our other three neighboring towns with Joint Base Cape Cod. And just to interject, although this is still in its early phases, touching on an item that Doug Brown mentioned, that conceivably gives Falmouth another option for wastewater disposal, since we have plenty of capacity in our plant, as we know, to treat waste, but the disposal is a challenge. But there is some excess capacity at Joint Base Cape Cod that is part of the analysis that has been underway with Falmouth and the three adjacent towns. So that's, good news that that will be continuing, and I know that that is one of the Cape Compact initiatives that is talked about frequently at the state level, so we're happy to be able to do that. And as noted, Peter and I were pleased to attend the Mass Municipal Annual Meeting Friday and Saturday, and I've noted the Risk Management Best Practices Award that we talked about earlier, which we're very gratified to have received, and again, complimenting Denise and Peter for their work with the respective representatives for worker safety that is underway. Also, very pleased to attend as well the No Place For Hate, and congratulations to echo Megan's congratulations to Scobah Rhodes for his very inspiring work over many, many years, certainly much longer than I've been here, and I was, have been very pleased to work with him during my time with the town. And again, as a reminder, we meet on Saturday, this Saturday, January 27th, at 8:30 a.m. for the joint boards' meeting at the Herman Meeting Room in the library. So we look forward to moving forward on that, and as well as the following Saturday with the visioning and public input process at the high school. And that concludes my report, to the best of my knowledge.
Move return.
Second.
And tomorrow's the first.
All those in favor. All right. [laughter]
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.